Eric, we ready?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
I am here.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Presente.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
Supervisor Royo?
Here.
And Supervisor Medron?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. I'd love to salute our flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in her God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam C A O, do we have any modifications to our agenda today?
Good morning, Chair Bone. There are no modifications today.
Heaven forbid. All right. With that, we'll move to the consent calendar. We do have some proclamations and recognitions, and I'll just start with Supervisor Wilson for Engineers Week.
All right. I'll start it out, I guess.
You're number one.
I guess. District three. All right. I'm going to do Engineers Week this time. Appreciate this. We do this every year and as we should. Whereas, America's engineers transform ideas into reality, some say it's applied physics, solving problems using science, technology to produce services, systems to better serve the needs of society. Whereas engineers serve local government, county and state work to design and construct the following types of projects. And there's a whole list here, you know, airports, roads, railroads, harbors, parks, subdivisions, surveys, this is pretty standard, bridges, buildings, water systems, flood control systems, wastewater treatment plants, seismic projects, and environmental enhancements. I want to say I worked most of my career as an ecological engineer and landscape restorationist, so I would say there's a lot more to it than just the concrete out there, for sure. Whereas engineers strive for equality, economy, and betterment of life of our community. Whereas throughout the nation, the week of February 18th through the 24th is being recognized as National Engineers Week, coinciding with George Washington's birthday, our nation's first engineer. Now therefore be it resolved that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, in recognition of contribution of engineers to society in an effort to promote the interests of the youth and community in math and science and engineering, does hereby declare February 18th, 2024, as Engineers Week of Humboldt County. I'm going to recognize that the idea of engineering goes way before George Washington, and so we're going to have to modernize some of these proclamations at some point. But I do want to recognize the profession, I think is very, very important. I want to recognize that Cal Poly Humboldt has the oldest and largest environmental engineering program in the world and has made a difference on a global scale, and I think that has set a new standard in what engineering can be, especially for civil engineers. And this was mostly all civil related, but of course we have mechanical engineers and we have chemical engineers and aeronautical engineers, and so I'll make sure that next year this is a bit more updated. But in any case, thank you, engineer. Appreciate all the work you do. It's very important.
Wouldn't be here without you. All right. We also have Supervisor Bushnell, if you want to recognize Mr. Belmont?
Go ahead, I'll do that.
Okay. Well, we did this last week at the Riedel Fire Department, and Mr. Belmont is a tree climber, and we had a, it was a very, very bad situation. We had somebody climb to the top of a tree and then hang by a rope at about 150 foot tall. So it took Mr. Belmont about an hour and a half to get up there, and by the time he'd got up there, and he called him out of bed in the middle of the night or early morning, and the person who he was trying to save had taken their life up there. And so then he had became, went from life-saving to recovery. But he still got the job done, and the Riedel Fire Department and the City of Riedel, this happened out at the Murphy Ranch, and they, that was part of their call area, and Mike's not, I don't even think he's on the fire department. He was just called out because he was a tree climber, and he works for Danny Collins, so he climbed the tree and recovered the body for the fire department. So there was a certificate of recognition, so he should be recognized on that, so.
Can I add to?
Yes.
Thank you. So the Riedel Fire Department, they had their annual dinner, and they recognized both Dan Collins and Michael Belmont. And, you know, I just really want to encourage people that are struggling to reach out, there's lots of organizations or help that if you need. And this was very traumatizing to the Riedel Fire Department district and to the Dan Collins and the tree-climbing Michael. And so, you know, heroism is not just our hired, you know, our hired or volunteer folks, it is just your everyday person that wants to help. And so we really thank them and recognize the struggles that come after something like this, and really want to say thank you.
All right. And actually, the next one is yours. We have a retirement resolution for Jill Duffy.
Yeah, and I don't see Jill here. She was going to come, but I'll go ahead and read it.
She's retired.
She is. So we recognized Jill at the Humboldt Waste Management Authority at the last meeting for her, as she retired in 2022, and then went on to do an internship at the fair, and so she was kind of still working. But so this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors where Jill Duffy was hired as Executive Director for Humboldt Waste Management Authority in 2012 after serving eight years as the fifth district Humboldt County Supervisor. And whereas Jill brought along her uncanny ability to consume and comprehend materials and complex regulatory documents, along with her planning acumen to spearhead the Phase One and Phase Two closure of the Cummins Road landfill while working through a cleanup and abatement order for the Cummins Road burn ash site. And whereas whether she was giving a presentation to the city council or talking to customers, her unbridled enthusiasm for H W M A and its programs were evident. Throughout her time, she worked tirelessly to strengthen relationships with residents and jurisdictions through her creation of education and outreach media at a time when the H W M A was an afterthought to most. And whereas her, the enthusiasm for H W M A eclipsed only by her tireless effort to edify the H W M A and its services provided to include no-charge mattress drop-offs, a vast expansion of hazardous waste service, solidifying long-term recycling processes, and solid waste disposal, as well as implementing sharps and pharmaceutical disposal options throughout the county. And whereas her sound judgment and direction has shaped what H W M A is today and has shifted the H W M A from a simple transfer station that handled solid waste to a regional entity that strives to implement sustainable and efficient waste management practices that promote public health and reduce environmental impacts. And whereas her positive attitude and willingness to take on any task instilled confidence and a sense of community throughout the H W M A staff, with her willingness to guide and counsel the next generation of organizational leaders, ensuring the health of the authority remains long after her. And whereas Jill Duffy, H W M A's Executive Director, retired on January 15th, 2022 with almost 10 years of exemplary service to the authority and over 25 years and counting of service to the public. So we recognize, you know, people in our communities that make substantial impacts throughout the county of Humboldt, and she is definitely one, so congratulations to Jill.
All right. And I'm not, I was, oh, excuse me.
Were you going to?
Go ahead.
Can I remark?
I was going to say something, but you go ahead, please.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to move on before the opportunity. I just really appreciated having the chance to work with Jill when I was a member of that board quite a few years ago now. And, you know, I'll just say that Jill dealt with some extremely big challenges. Humboldt Waste Management Authority really continues to deal with significant challenges around, you know, our ruralness and our transportation system does make it extraordinarily challenging for us to address the hauling needs and recycling needs, and now, you know, food waste diversion and all of those things. And I know she has handed off the reins a little while ago of that organization, but I just want to thank her for setting up Humboldt Waste Management Authority so well and dealing with that Cummins Road landfill project. I was on the board at the time, and it was a huge project. So phenomenally well done, and thank you so much, Jill, for the community service, wearing all the different hats. It really has been an exciting career.
And I served, I was on the board back then, and I think I served for her whole tenure, for 10 years, so, on the H W M A. And Jill did a good job, appreciate everything she did. I'm not sure if the, Eric, did you want to pick this up for her and get it to her? Okay. So Eric Keller Heckman, the new Executive Director of H W M A is here, so. This is not Jill, I want a clarification for everybody, this is not Jill's accepting this.
Thank you, Chair Bone. As you said, my name is Eric Keller. I'm the new Executive Director for Humboldt Waste Management Authority, and I had the pleasure to serve under Jill for her entire tenure term as well. No amount of words can put into perspective the impact that she had, not only on H W M A as an organization, but their staff in general. I would not be where I am today without her guidance, and the authority would not be in the place it is now as a potential regional entity to continue her great work. So I want to thank you guys for recognizing her effort as well.
Please, go ahead.
My friends call me Daniel. God has a sense of humor. I know all about the landfill, and I know about Jill. I ran against Jill back in the day to stop camp, and I wanted Jill to win. No one gave me any money, I wanted 215 to win. I know about the landfill, because that's the first time a Kansas Supervisor was at this podium to tell you not to buy at the landfill. It was a toxic waste dump, but the Supervisor at that time bought the toxic waste dump. The Supervisor, I worked five years at that landfill. That landfill is where I got crushed in an earth mover. The landfill is where I saw the white light. I should be dead. No ancestors, but, so for you to have this meeting and for me to be standing here, I wanted you to all be amazed at God, because this blows me away. Hi, Jill.
Thank you. Tom?
I also want to offer my thanks. I've worked for Jill since she was on the Board of Supervisors during her tenure with H W M A, during her tenure with the Fair Association, and looking forward to whatever she's going to do next, because she is dedicated to this community and has proven so, and I expect that she'll find another place to help somebody whenever somebody needs somebody of community spirit. I'll call Jill, and most likely she will show up again on our radar, and I always appreciated working with her, and she's great to work with, and I want to thank her for her dedication to Humboldt County. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Supervisor Wilson?
I'd like to add to the chorus of praise for Jill, and I've known Jill probably just out of high school, for me anyway, before her and mine's careers in public service. I would, I want to say that it's been, it's always been fun working both professionally and having Jill as a friend in all of the issues that she's worked on, I just want to say, and even just not worked on, just having someone to bounce ideas off of, both a detail thinker and a broad thinker. And so it's just really, it's been, it's been a pleasure to have that partner and colleague through these years, and I want to say that I'm looking forward, because I don't, these retirements are only sort of subjective, I think, you know, in terms of, in terms of folks' engagement in the community, and I can't imagine we won't see more of Jill as time moves forward.
Okay. Steve, you're good? Attaboy.
It's all been said.
Attaboy. Good job. All right. We'll move on to, the last one will be to proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month. Probably should have done that the first meeting of the month of February, but.
We should have.
I know. We got a guy here in charge of that, anyway. Supervisor Royo brought it for.
All right. So we have a proclamation, then we also have a special certificate of recognition, and Florence Parks is going to be here to receive both. So I'll read the proclamation first, and then I'll speak to the certificate of recognition as well. So this is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, obviously. Whereas the origins of Black History Month, also recognized as Black Liberation Month, can be traced back to 1915, when historian and author Dr. Carter G. Woodson established the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, and once remarked, "Real education means to inspire people to live more abundantly, to learn to begin with life as they find it and make it better." And whereas Black History Month serves as a reminder of the struggles and triumphs of diverse identities represented within the African diasporas throughout history, including resilience in the face of oppression, pursuit of civil rights and social justice, and leadership in various endeavors. And whereas the observance of Black History Month provides a valuable opportunity for all residents to celebrate the rich heritage, remarkable achievements, and enduring contributions of African Americans to our community and nation. And whereas the history of Black Americans in the United States is deeply intertwined with the nation's journey towards liberty, justice, and equality. And whereas Black Americans have played an integral role in shaping the cultural, economic, political, and social landscape, contributing significantly to its progress and prosperity. And whereas by recognizing and honoring the legacy of Black Americans, we reaffirm our commitment to diversity, inclusion, and equity, and strive to create opportunities where everyone can thrive and succeed. And whereas it is essential to educate ourselves and future generations about the history and experiences of African Americans fostering, understanding, empathy, and unity within our community. And whereas the county of Humboldt is firmly committed to valuing diversity and holds the belief that equity, respect, and justice are fundamental to our identity, democracy, and the overall well-being of our society. And whereas the county of Humboldt hereby commits to identifying and eliminating institutional racism by taking appropriate action to eradicate racial bias within the systems of Humboldt County. And whereas the Board of Supervisors further encourages residents to engage in dialogue, reflection, and action to address systemic racism, inequality, and injustice, and to work towards building a more just and equitable society for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the county of Humboldt hereby declares the month of February 2024 as Black History Month in Humboldt, and encourages all residents to participate in commemorative events, educational activities, and community initiatives that celebrate the heritage and contributions of African Americans. And I can say there have been some phenomenal events going on this month, and so while we are recognizing Black Liberation Month at the end of the month, there have been some wonderful events and organizations doing great work all month and all year, all around the year. And I would encourage folks to check out Black Humboldt and support Black-owned businesses, amongst other things that they can do to really appreciate and celebrate this month. And I also want to, it's really exciting to be able to offer this certificate of recognition to Florence Parks, and this is for contributions to North Coast Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and exceptional community service. So thank you so much for all you do in our community, and you're welcome to, I'll bring these to you, and then you're welcome to say a few words.
All right. Well, thank you. What an honor. I stand on the shoulders of greats. So although I get to accept these, thank you. Whoa, pause for just a second.
Let's see, do we want to open the process of things? You do the pop.
Yeah, you can have the one that says your name.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So first, I'd like to address what many people already stated, and that's that this is the end of February. And I think it's apropos of us, because really in Black community, we want to celebrate our Black heritage all year long, and there have been reasons why we have had a month to uplift the many things that the Black community is doing. But there are so many ways that you can get involved, and Black Humboldt is a great way to, because they are the convenor for all of our community. They've done such a rich job, just two high school young women who created a program and saw a need in our community, and uplifted not only the youth that were in that community, but also all of us that needed a place to come together. So I'm so grateful for Black Humboldt, and I'm also grateful for the NAACP and Sharon and Kente, who are running in leadership there, as well as so many greats in our community. One of the things, when I reached out to Mo about who is, who has developed the Black Humboldt, she, Mo Harper Dezier, she mentioned that it's so important that we are in proximity to one another, because it really brings us closer together when we get to know one another. So I accept both the proclamation, and I will share it with the leaders in the Black community, and we are so honored that we are getting this jump on this year, that we're going to spend together in community. One of the ways that the business community can immediately support Black Humboldt is by pouring into Juneteenth. That's just around the corner, and as we know, it's a celebration of bringing all Black people together because, for Jubilee, the fact that it took two years for some of us to find out that our people were free. And I come from a long legacy of amazing Nigerian people who live in Texas, in Linden, Texas, and celebrate every single year, this important time of the year. So please, support Black Humboldt not only in deed, or in word, but in action, and join us, because I think you'll have some fun that you've never experienced before, so. As for myself, I am here today representing Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast. Yes, our name has had many forms throughout its time, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters, a national organization, was started in 1908. But in the same form that it was started, here in Humboldt County 55 years ago, it was one individual who saw that our young people needed mentors, a formal program to support mentors. And so for the last 55 years, Big Brothers, Big Sisters has been poured into by this community. And so that's why I say I stand on the shoulders of greats, because I truly do. Monty, who was the Executive Director, who led this agency for multiple decades, and then Christine, who led for another decade, right before I got to take leadership after Tabitha, got to lead for a couple of years. I am, I was, five years ago when I joined this agency, I was just taken aback by the number of people who believe in our mission and step up to support the work that we do. And this is the time of year that we do it. So this weekend is Bowl for Kids' Sake. We will be bowling to make sure that mentoring happens. Every dollar raised gets to decide how many youth we serve this year. It costs $2,500 for us to serve one youth, and we are hoping that we can serve 100 youth this year. The county definitely invests in mentoring each year, and so I do want to thank the leadership that they do that work. But mentoring does not happen accidentally. It's because we take the initiative. It's because we step up in our own lives. We can do that formally or informally. I know Rex does it informally all the time at the baseball field. I know Supervisor Mike Wilson will be a lunch buddy very soon. And those of you who are mentoring your colleagues and other young professionals, it means so very much. So thank you for taking the time. And I remember that Supervisor Bushnell mentioned how important it is to also mentor our young adults, and that there's adult mentoring happening, and our senior citizens that need us too. So mentoring happens, and that proximity to one another just connects us and makes our community so much more, just elaborate and beautiful. And so I'm honored to accept this, for the work that our agency has done for the last 55 years and beyond, and I look forward to the service that I will get to do as I move forward. Thank you so much.
And again, what a great, we have so many great organizations, and we have so many different things to celebrate, you know, and you're right, it should be an all-year celebration for all of these one-month celebrations. I don't know why, who gets a month, you know? Give them a year. So, Doc?
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Bone. And I would say, give us a year too. But I actually just wanted to take a second, thank you Supervisor Royo for leading the charge on this proclamation. We really appreciate it, it is impactful. And then I just wanted to also add that you could not find a more deserving person than Ms. Parks, and so again, thank you very much for that. Ms. Parks is a guest for our Learning Corner, that's actually going to take place in about an hour, as well as Dr. Kente Johnson from the NAACP, so we are going to have a good conversation. But again, just wanted to thank your board for taking the time out and proclaiming this month Black History Month, and thanks a lot.
You bet. I appreciate, yeah, she is, she is pretty active. She's already been emailing me this morning, so. I got it handled, I got it handled. Anything else? Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay, with that, the fanfare is over, we'll go back to the consent calendar. Do I have any input on the consent calendar from anybody on the board? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. So our board assigns people to commissions and committees, and we're always looking for people, and so I want to just recognize that we're, we have a vacancy of an at-large member on the forestry review committee. Chris Carroll was on there for, I think, 23 years and retired or moved along, and so we're looking for a forester that would be interested in this at-large position. You could reach out to Tracy D'Amico if you're interested, or contact one of the supervisors, and they could get you an application. So I just want to recognize that we're always looking for people on these committees and commissions.
Planning Commission two. Planning Commission two.
And Planning Commission, yeah. We have an at-large member, Planning Commission, taking applications for that, so thank you.
All right. Then I will open up the consent calendar to public comment, if you have anything pertaining to things on the consent calendar.
So I always, we have item D, which is consent, which is supposed to be things that really aren't discussed, but I guess we have all kinds of different definitions of a consent calendar. Item number 31 should be noted, I believe. We're having a bid contract to have, I believe, this building re-riff for $1.6 million and some change. Strongly support you taking and doing all these projects as quick as you can. For those of us in construction and watching what costs are going, people are saying we're having small amounts of inflation. I've heard, like, last night, certain things, certain commodities such as fire trucks have more than doubled in price, and you're going to see construction costs, all these things going up. If you have money, it's way better to have money in your infrastructure than money in the bank, because it's going to be going down just like it does in a lot of third-world countries, so strongly support these kind of projects. I did have a little bit of concern, we're purchasing a piece of property at 803 Fourth Street, and it doesn't say how much, I remember, it wasn't a good. it was a good price. But it was a little bit disconcerting to say the property did not have any potential intended use in your staff report, if I recall. And it, I thought we were developing a, a plan for these things. I know you feel it's a piece to the puzzle you may need for the future. But it would be, be nice to see, know, and for you to know and all of us to know what the overall puzzle's going to look like when you put all the pieces together. So that's just a recommendation on those kind of things. Find a purpose definitely for it. But sometimes, I guess, things like that happen. They come up to you and speak.
Thank you. How are you doing?
Good, how about yourself?
Good, Doc.
Good to see you all. Calipelti Olson. I'm here to speak in support of the proclamation of Black History Month and the recognition of Florence Parks. Florence is one of the amazing visionary leaders in our community who has really revitalized Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and is implementing so many visionary projects. And so your recognition of her and the work that she's been doing the last several years for Big Brothers and Big Sisters is meaningful to all of us in the youth advocacy world here in Humboldt County, which is growing and burgeoning. In regards to Black History Month in particular, this last weekend Humboldt County Black Music and Art Association opened their Harambe Youth Cultural Center in Arcata on 16th Street. It was an amazing celebration. And also, I just wanted, in regards to this proclamation, to recognize the work of Humboldt County Black Music and Art Association, Valetta Lorenza and amazing youth leader Kayan for the hard work and dedication that they've spent over the last year opening this new resource for Black young people in Humboldt County. Our community is continuing to come together in solidarity with each other and create more and more visionary programming that is inclusive of all young people across our community. So thank you again for recognizing Black History Month and our amazing local Black leaders. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the board.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll take a roll call vote.
Thank you Chair Bone. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Royo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson. Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. And with that, I believe we have a closed session? Time set? No? Oh, we have a presentation, that's what it is. I'm sorry. Excuse me. I knew there was something at 9:30. And I almost got there on time. I believe this comes from Supervisor Royo.
It does, yes. I can speak to it for a moment. And I'd like to invite our guest up. Yes, please come on up to the podium. And Nikki has the slide advancer for you. Welcome. And we do have. Nikki, I sprang this on you, and I'm sorry, but we do have somebody potentially joining as a panelist on Zoom as well that I just sent the Zoom link to. Her name is Cindy, if you see her in there. Yes, yes.
Is Cindy available or is she online?
Is it Ankowitz?
Ankowitz.
Thank you. She's on, so I can ask her to unmute.
Okay.
Great. So I, I did just want to give a brief intro to this. So I was invited by some community members to help collaborate a bit about this really wonderful and unique opportunity. And to, to help think through some of the ways that California Care Force can host a medical and dental clinic in Humboldt County. And there's been extensive fundraising and collaboration around this. And I know that you'll be sharing today what California Care Force is and what it's going to be offering to our community. But I just wanted to thank you for being here today. And thank Cindy, who's online. So please go ahead.
Thank you. And I want to, thanks for the opportunity to present what a group of people are doing here to address the critical needs of dental and vision and medical care. My name is Tom Lewis, and I'm mostly retired dentist. I do a lot of volunteer work now. I've been over 50 years graduate from dental school. And I've had a really fulfilling, wonderful career. And about 10 years ago, I decided that I had been so fortunate to be able to go to dental school and have a viable private practice. I spent two years in the Air Force as a dentist. And I wanted to give back. So I began working for the Native American clinics in California, in the Central Valley, and in this county. And I became aware of the really critical needs of many people. I'd say a third to maybe a half people who are, do not have access to dental care for whatever reasons. Either the high cost, which is common, or they don't have transportation, they have fears, all sorts of reasons. So I have, over the last 10 years, volunteered in some 20, 30 clinics from, in Florida, Georgia, in this state, even in Nicaragua and the Philippines. So I, I decided after seeing this great need in the world and specifically in California and here, that I would spend my time as well as I could to volunteer and help organize clinics. So that's what I've been doing. So I found this wonderful not-for-profit organization, California Care Force. About 10 or 12 years ago, the Society of Oral Surgeons created this not-for-profit clinic to put on free clinics for each year, which they've done for some like eight years, except during COVID. So I was volunteering with these clinics. I got on the board and I got more enthusiastic. So I decided that Humboldt County, I would like to help bring more of these clinics. So we began work in last fall. And we've rented the Adorni Center. We have a date. We've got a host committee that's working diligently to raise money for our $80,000 budget. We've made about, we've already got $40,000. So I'm really encouraged about fundraising. So July 12th and 13th, at the Adorni Center, we will open our doors for a two-day free clinic. No questions asked, no forms filled out, no ID. If you have a tooth problem or you need glasses, we're offering vision care. Then we serve you with volunteers. So I encourage you to come take a look that day and see. We are planning on seeing about 700 to 800 patients. On the bigger clinics in Sacramento and so forth, we see up to 1,500 to 1,800 patients over two days. So with that, I want to invite Cindy. Cindy Ankowitz is the executive director of California Care Force. And so local people like myself are, have partnered with California Care Force. They have the equipment, the material, they have the administrative capability to handle a clinic like this of some 200 and, over 200 volunteers it will take to run the clinic. So Cindy, are you there? Can you?
I am, thank you.
I don't see where you are.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I believe that there's a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, I have the.
That we were going to be sharing? There we go. Thank you so much. First, I just would like to thank you all for giving Tom and I the chance and the opportunity to share California Care Force with you all and what we do, as well as sharing the, the concept of the clinic that we're bringing to Humboldt County and Eureka, the Adorni Center. Next slide, please. So first of all, I mean, Tom has spoken on a lot of these areas. So I just want to kind of touch base. Our mission for California Care Force is to promote the health and wellbeing of those in need through volunteer-supported, no-cost healthcare clinics across the state of California. Our vision is to improve the quality of lives of our patients by providing them quality and caring healthcare services for free. Now, healthcare services for us is going to be primarily dental treatments, which would be restorative, like fillings, extractions, dental hygiene and X-rays, and vision screening, which is full acuity, vision acuity, and eyeglasses made on-site. We also do basic medical screenings, like blood glucose levels and also blood pressure, and making sure and taking a course of brief history. In addition to that, we like to try to get what we call wraparound services or ancillary services, like mammography, completely pre, chiropractic care, acupuncture care. And those are things that we'll be working on to bring to the Humboldt County Clinic. As well as, we want to have public education and helping people understand especially oral health and the need to have continuity of care. So that is something that we focus on. We try to get local providers in the area and local federally qualified healthcare agencies or centers that we can link patients who don't have a home provider to a home provider so that they can have care, not just once a year or when the clinics happen, but actually every six months, get their teeth clean, you know, check their vision at least every year or two, go to the medical doctor and have that home, medical home that they need. Next slide, please. So our key principles, basically, we came together as California Care Force through, as what Tom mentioned, the California Association of Oral and Maxillofacial Surgeons. We are the charitable arm of that organization. It was their concept and they brought it here as part of, originally RAM. And then we broke away from 2011 and 2013 to start our own organization as California Care Force. We find that California just has such a significant need that we didn't want to be just doing one a year. We really wanted to do more and make a larger impact. So we believe that everyone, regardless of a background, ability to pay, regardless of anything, they deserve the quality healthcare that could be available to them. We want to eliminate as many barriers as possible so we don't require any kind of insurance. We don't even ask if someone has insurance to receive our services, as well as there's no, you know, we don't ask for what their income is or employment size, immigration status, any of those things. None of them actually matter to us. We want to just make sure that they receive the services. All of our services are provided at absolutely no cost to the patients. And we, to honor our veterans, we always have a special priority for veterans so that they actually receive services first. Next slide. The event itself is going to be at, at the Adorni Center. It's July 12th and 13th. The doors open at 7:00 AM and close at 5:00 PM. It is on a first-come, first-served basis as capacity allows. So as people come, we find out what services they feel they're going to need, and they get into the correct line, whether it be dental, vision, or medical services. Everyone comes in and, as we can, as capacity allows, they receive patient triage, and then they receive the services that they're able to have. Next slide. So in order to bring this event to Humboldt County and Eureka, we need, of course, the community resources. And we need some community support. So we're looking for volunteers. So we have the dental, vision, and medical volunteers that are needed. These are the professionals who will do, actually do the services. How I look at it is California Care Force facilitates the clinic, but it's really our volunteers who do the clinic. It's their clinic. And so it's their professionalism, their knowledge, and their service that actually makes these clinics happen. Of course, we have to raise the funds associated. And we're very excited that we have hit half of our goal. So we still have about $40,000 to go. But we're very excited that we really made some great inroads this, this February. We also need help with marketing, distribution of flyers. We have, you have so many resources in Humboldt County that we're learning, that we're going to make sure that they receive flyers so that the community knows and can show up for these, these resources that are just really so valuable. We're looking at, if we serve 750 patients, we're looking at value worth of services of about $1.5 million of services that are going to be provided. So we're, we're pretty excited. We know that there's a huge need there. And we're happy that we're able to finally get to Humboldt County to do this. We're also looking for in-kind contributions, food for our volunteers, medical supplies, signage, even an ambulance. We try to, we always have an ambulance on-site in case there's a medical emergency where we need to move forward and take someone to the hospital. Next slide, please. So basically, to recap, we provide free temporary dental vision and medical clinic support to support about 750 residents of Humboldt County and the surrounding area. Oftentimes, these people are the community's most vulnerable. We utilize volunteer medical, dental, and vision students and professionals and community members to really do this program. And we leverage the donations that we receive so that we can make this huge positive impact. So we're resulting with all this work and the host committee and our volunteers and the support of the community, we're hoping to serve 750 people to receive free dental vision and medical support, to provide services to families, individuals, seniors, and veterans in 2024 at the Adorni Center. Next slide. But really, the most important thing is that we really ask you and the community to join the force of California Care Force. Next slide. Really help us and help our dentists and doctors alleviate pain and the acute pain that the, that the community has and community members have. Next slide. Help people smile again. Next slide. And people hopefully to see clearly again. They can come to the clinic and leave with a pair of glasses. Here's our information, Dr. Lewis's information, as well as mine. And we also have, of course, on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Next slide. I'll just open it up for questions.
Well, thank you very much. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. I really thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. And I want to emphasize that this is local Humboldt County people helping Humboldt County people. And my goal is to have this an ongoing annual event and perhaps even have a local, small emergency clinic at some point. Thank you.
So, hang on a sec. I think there's going to be a couple of questions. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I was hoping that the slides, that the, could be emailed to our board.
Okay. Nikki said she can email them.
Oh, I did have some flyers in my car. I forgot to bring them in, but I'll bring them back.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay?
Also, I would encourage everyone to check out our website. It is California, all spelled out, Californiacareforce.org. And we have information about the 34 clinics that we've served and the over $17 million worth of support that we've provided to California community. So please, you know, feel free to check out our website as well and see what we're doing and the good news. And look at the pictures. It's some pretty amazing things that we're able to accomplish with our volunteers.
So we, it looks like the amount of care you give is about $2,000 per person, if I'm doing the math right? If 750 go to a million, is that what you average it out to? Some more, obviously, some less.
There are other.
Yes, it's about $2,000 is the average.
And then on the dental, I imagine you're partnering with Open Door Clinic on this or using them quite a bit? Because they do so much of this at our local schools because they have a couple dental vans and stuff.
Well, certainly, we're looking for dentists and assistants. We've, I've already gone before the Dental Society. So, you know, they'll be helping us. So we have all the equipment that we need, we need volunteers. And that will come after we get our budget funded.
And you have some pretty good money raisers up here. I'm sure they can make a couple of calls for you and help shorten that gap of that $40,000 because it's a great thing you're doing.
Yeah, thanks. My card, my contact, you have on the slides, don't you?
Mike, and then.
I just want to say how awesome this is. That's it. Thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, I'm really actually looking forward to your first run of this so we can, so, you know, so that we can iterate and do it again. So I'm just really excited.
Well, we would welcome, during those two days at the clinic, the 13th and 14th, we would love to have, to provide you a tour. If we can, you know, you come, we will show you the tour. We'll give you the, you know, let you know how everything is. You can even get X-rays and your teeth cleaned if you want. Or leave with a pair of glasses. We'll make you a priority. So.
There are no questions asked.
If we, if we, if we show up, put us to work. We'll tour it through work. Supervisor Roy?
I just wanted to say, Dr. Lewis, if you have those flyers, if you want to come, put them on that little table by the door. put them on that little table by the door, we'll grab them and make sure they get distributed. And thank you again for helping spearhead this coming to Humboldt County. It's really important.
You're welcome.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share the information. Natalie, thank you so much for joining our first meeting and inviting us here today.
Great. All right.
Thank you very much. Have a great Tuesday.
All right. Do we have enough? There's no action on that. Do we have any public comment on that item? Seeing none, we'll move on to...
Supervisor Chair Bone?
Yes.
I do need a motion to receive and file that presentation.
So moved.
A second.
Wilson first, Royal second. Roll call.
Thank you. We'll start with Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Midron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
All right. We'll move on to pavement management program update from the Public Works Department. Actually, we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items. But I just prepped you for the pavement management.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Daniel. Two people have two bags of weed. And the first thing I need to say is no two bags of weed are the same. They're all different. It's not like wine where you can blend it together and have two different bags. One person says, "I have a bag of weed. I have a bag of money. I can't smoke any of this weed because I have a bag of money. It's this much weight. I can't change it." Greed, greed, greed. Another person says, "I have a bag of medicine. I get to share it. I get to smoke it. I get to have fun with this, with all my friends." That was me 45 years ago when I first came to Humboldt County. And I made a wish in my heart. I wanted to meet the keeper of the marijuana pipe. I wanted to be a gatekeeper of God. I wanted to be the gatekeeper and give him some of the money that I had made from this weed. And I was taken to Kashmir. I was taken to India. I was taken to a guru. And I learned there that if you take this greed and you make it into money and you make it into your only possession in life, it destroys you. In Kashmir, none of the Hindus sold the weed. They only, the Islam people sold it all because they didn't want the karma of touching it. And I asked you, what do you guys do to get your money from the weed? You don't want to touch it because every bag of weed is different. You need to have some place to come together and let people make money. And you need to make a label that's a picture and a date so that everyone knows where it came from and then it gets smoked and that's just history and it's not worth anything. This is what's going on with the marijuana industry. It's a total collapse. Anybody cannot grow 1,000 plants. It's all about little tiny farmers and that's the people who make the good medicine. If you want to be greed, if you want to lose your soul, if you want to have nothing in it but just money, then it could encourage you. It will self-destruct you and your family. It's a curse. Because this is what I learned in Kashmir. I went to this smoke a flaming chum. A chum that held in your hand, it had walnut charcoal on the top because it has a flame of 50 cigarettes. It had hash in it made from cashmere. It had walnut tobacco, there's tobacco that had molasses on it that was rubbed. And you smoked it with a suffy cloth, with this wet cloth because you're smoking 50 cigarettes. This guru I went with, I never saw him sleep. I never saw him yawn. I never saw him not sitting there. And if any of you want to understand what I'm saying, you can see me on Flaming Chum on YouTube. I made a video. It's called Flaming Chum, just like gay flaming, but no, this is a flaming chum. And this is what it's about. It's your religious freedom.
Thank you, Daniel.
Religious freedom.
Thank you.
Religious rights of America.
Next.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is James Chaffey. I have attempted to address issues regarding the Humboldt County Law Library. At your last meeting, your chair, Rex Bone, made what I take to be a very valuable point. It doesn't make much sense if you're not paying attention. Not paying attention is nothing to be proud of, but we can leave that for another time. Today, we will use this opportunity to recapitulate, to make sure everybody's on the same page. You look on the website and the law, to find out where the Law Library is, it says it's appointments only and it's strictly forbidden to come to the library without an appointment. The demand must be high because all of the appointments are taken except for a waiting period of about four days. I signed up for an appointment and got a confirmation by email. I asked, it looked like an appointment to use LexisNexis, an online research service. I emailed back to find out if it was Lexis only or could I visit the library in person. It took less than an hour to find out that my appointment had been canceled. I attempted to follow up. There was no response. The email count was a closed door. The following week, I went to make another appointment, another three or four days waiting period. I decided I'd go down there to find out what they mean by a full library. Not only was nobody there, but there was a notice on the door saying, "Sorry, we missed you." UPS. There was another notice from the day before that, "Sorry, we missed you," from the UPS. In other words, not only was it vacant, no one had been there for three days to take the UPS notices off the door. I attended two meetings of the Law Library Board of Trustees and brought this to your attention in the same way they have brought it to you. The board made no response in English or indeed any verbal language. They made a very clear response in body language and it was, "That's right. Do something about it, punk." This stimulated me to take a look at the foundations that would allow this to exist. What I found was multiple layers of negligence, mismanagement, malfeasance, including outright illegalities, most of them laid directly at the door of this Board of Supervisors. At the end of this, all you've got is attempt by your chair, I should say a closing attempt, to embarrass me. That's all you have, really? This is in the context where a use of a law library is a civil right. This raises the question of if this is what you consider normal, what's the rest of the county government look like? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lucius. I am a member of the Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration and I will be commenting to urge you to oppose Prop 1. Prop 1 on our March ballot seeks to take away personal autonomy from primarily BIPOC communities, destroy families by forcing children into foster care when their parents are conserved, overload our already limited mental health workers, and destroy a person's right to self-determination. Due to Prop 1 mentioning that from a $2.8 billion section of funding, there will be involuntary housing units, Prop 1 is simply, in my opinion, unethical. When we look at our homeless populations across the state, the majority of houseless persons are two-spirit LGBTQIA+ non-white, more likely to be or have been involved in foster care, more likely to be or have been involved in the juvenile justice system, and more likely to have been born into lower-class families. There is a huge disproportionality with Prop 1 targeting already marginalized communities, taking away their rights and forcing compliance versus community healing. On a county level, Prop 1 makes it so there is no dedicated funding for most of our current harm reduction services, such as the Hope Center, TAE Center, Latina Liaison Position, Queer Humble, Local Suicide Prevention, and more. Prop 1 stands to take away the resources we have in place to help our populations that struggle with behavioral health issues from all walks of life, houseless or otherwise, and force them into a residential since they won't be able to address their mental health issues from a lack of services. In Humboldt County, we have an average ACE score of 4+. For those who may not know, ACE is Adverse Childhood Experiences, and the higher a score is out of 10, the worse projected outcome and support for a child or individual. Supporting Prop 1 means you are stripping resources away from these people, questioning their adversity to cooperate, and locking them inside facilities so they are a problem to be fixed and not a human being with a lack of resources. For myself, a lot of my lived experience comes from homelessness and being around family members with substance use disorder. In my opinion, the only reason so many people turn to substance use while houseless is to medicate the fact that they have no resources that help them move forward and Prop 1 would destroy what our community has worked so hard to build. Supporting Prop 1, to me, is supporting mental health imprisonment, ignoring our community needs, and targeting already marginalized populations. So again, as a member of the Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration, I strongly encourage your opposition to Prop 1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why is it planning this? She's actually talking about what I was just going to talk about. Okay. My name is Ann Brackett and I come from Hope Center and I've learned a lot from them. So we would lose our funding. Many people that go there, they go there for support, they get out of their house and never get out of their house without Hope Center. I'm a county worker there now, working towards a peer coach. So I'm totally against this Prop 1. Those in the audience and those up here, if you can like study with closely, I'd be happy about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Eichenbaum. I'm a resident of Arcata and a member of the HCTAC Youth Advocacy Board. As a young person who has experienced homelessness and faces behavioral...
David, do you want to bring the mic down a little bit? There you go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Faces behavioral health issues. I urge the members of the board to please vote no on Prop 1 and encourage your constituents to do the same. Its sunny, veteran-focused ad campaigns attempt to conceal dark truths. Prop 1's deepest flaw is its approach to behavioral health treatment. The legislation would put billions of dollars towards building involuntary treatment facilities and move the state backwards in time. With the passage of Care Court and SB 43, the state has regressed to a focus on institutionalization and pathologizing homelessness. And now Prop 1 aims to create the funding for the modern-day equivalent of sanitariums, misguidedly supporting policies similar to mass incarceration. Prop 1's mask of treatment not tense willfully hides the fact that many homeless people would be forced into these locked facilities. Law enforcement can put someone on a 51-50 hold if deemed a danger to themselves or others. And we're all aware of how policing tends to escalate situations that are initially safe. Undoubtedly, Prop 1 would perpetuate systemic racism and violence by building more cages for the police to force people into. Our state's infrastructural problems cannot be solved by creating a mirror of the truly broken systems in question, prisons, jails, and policing. We cannot continue to support this out-of-sight, out-of-mind status quo mentality of Prop 1 that ignores the truth. If shoved into locked facilities on 51-50 hold, vulnerable people could be spat back onto the streets after a short time, just like they would once they got out of jail. People's trauma would remain and even worsen. They would not be healed but harmed. If people aren't tossed back out onto the street, they'd be sent to the psychiatric facilities that Prop 1 builds, which could lead to being placed in conservatorship. If placed into conservatorship, a person loses their right to decide how they want to recover and can even be forced to take medications that they don't want to. Prop 1 expands the state's ability to use court-ordered hospitalization and conservatorship by strengthening a program called Care Court. Unfortunately, policing is involved in this system as well. The court-ordered response, according to Care Court's fact sheet, can be initiated by first responders. It says further that individuals exiting a short-term involuntary hospital hold or arrest may be especially good candidates, end quote. I shudder at the thought that I could have been forced into conservatorship myself had Prop 1 passed during my mental health crisis. Not only is it inhumane, but experts in the field agree that involuntary treatment has also proven to be ineffective compared to voluntary treatment. What we need is community-based support and prevention and early intervention services to keep more people from becoming unhoused. These are what the MHSA currently funds, what the evidence supports as being effective, and what Prop 1 would severely damage by reallocating MHSA money. For instance, while I was homeless, living at Betty Chen's Village, the stipends I received from HCTAC from advocacy work and training, the peer-led services at the Raven Project TAE program that gave me a feeling of community, these are local lifelines that kept me afloat are at risk of getting ripped away from the young people of Humboldt. Please don't let this happen. Vote no on Prop 1 and save lives. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jo. I'm a, I'm a member of the Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration, as well as a current Youth Advocacy Board member. I live in Eureka and I'm a current foster youth. I want you to oppose Prop 1. As a foster youth, I have experienced many mental health challenges and witnessed many other youth battle for their lives due to mental health crisis. And sometimes they lose. This battle eliminates the guaranteed funding for a variety of support for these youth. These include school supports and prevention frameworks such as MTSS. These include youth center and peer support programs. Programs like this have helped more than just me find community, but many others as well. This means youth might be left to fight their minds without adequate supports. Diminished supports and combined with pushing for involuntary locked institutions have me concerned not only for me, but for my community. It is your responsibility to aid the youth. Please vote no on Prop 1 and encourage your community to do so as well.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Valencia Linder. I've never been to one of these meetings before. I understand I have three minutes. I am here to ask why there are no programs for rental assistance. I called 211 and was told that there are none, no programs to help with rental assistance, and I am in need of such right now. I've been homeless before through no fault of my own and I can't go through that again being homeless. I can't do that. I worked hard and I earned money to, to house myself. I really love where I live right now. I'm renting a room in a house and everyone gets along. I'd like to stay there if I could. But I have nowhere near enough money to, to pay my rent for March. I don't know what I'm going to do. I have two jobs right now and one job is two hours every other week and the other job is five hours a week. It's just not enough for me to pay my rent. I don't want to be homeless again. I would like somebody, anyone, to start rental assistance programs for people who want to be housed. I am, I guess, on Instagram, BrokeInTheUSA is my name I go by. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Excuse me, can you, the young lady sitting right there with the glasses, that's Connie Beck, our head of Department Health and Human Services. And if there's one thing we want is for you not to be homeless also. So if you would go over and connect with her right now, you just got put to the front of the line. But if you could go over and talk with her, there are programs and we sit up here and vote on them all the time and we'll watch one happen right in front of us right now. So if you could go discuss with Connie, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Gordon Clowery, running for First District Supervisor. This is why I'm running. Housing. We have a really rough homeless population here and we need housing. I was recently endorsed by the Humboldt County Democrats. I'm proud of that because I think it shows that my values and my, my drive to have more social programs align with the Dems. Not afraid of that. I'm not afraid to say that I'm a Democrat. I question why more people aren't proud of their own endorsements. The GOP endorsed Michelle Bushnell, Rex Bone, Roy Gomez locally. Maybe that's why we don't have as many social programs as we need for the size of the county that we have. Thank you.
Kanselwatsky, I'm not running for anything. Sophia's in the room and I don't know whether she has the latitude or desire to comment. I have my ballot with me, which I would... I have my ballot with me, which I would read. Proposition 1 authorizes $6.38 billion in bonds to build mental health treatment facilities for those with mental health and substance use challenges, provides housing for the -- and that was the end of it. So we don't know who it provides housing for. But anyway, I wish these things were a little clearer, maybe I have other book to read. I did wish to make comment on endorsements. This is a time of politics. I personally feel that there are certain people who should not be making endorsements, none of which applies to any of you, you're welcome to. But I feel that such people as the district attorney, the sheriff, and the judges should refrain. This gives them, when they start endorsing other judges, and things like this happens, and I'm not going to read the names here, we have one of the judges here who's kind of confrontational at this time, ex-judges, probably that's not as negative. But I really wish those out there in those particular professions would stay above that certain level of endorsing people for political issues. That's my comment. It's going to be an interesting race. I did kind of see all the money that was being spent, you know, it used to be $250,000 for a campaign year, $200,000. Now I think the average is below $50,000. You guys put some limits on there, I think that's great. I did notice, as far as I can tell, and I'll get the facts after everybody reports, but I think that the one opposition to Measure A probably will end up having spent over $100,000 or $150,000. I just find it interesting that more money is being spent against a measure and then is being spent for a good share of the money you guys spend to run for supervisors. I did come down, I went over and checked. I think there's 650-some people who owe money on Measure S money, and people who entered into contracts now. A person was there doing two of them as I wrote up, so that's up to 42. So I'm so proud of those people. But for the rest of the people out there who are not going to enter into these contracts to make the monies that they owe the county, I really wish they would consider doing so. My understanding is, as of end of March, if they haven't done so, entered in that contract, they will not be participating in that particular business anymore. I do look forward to when we come back after Measure A, whatever it does, and I'd like to work with Supervisor Mike Wilson, who stated he voted against the 2.0 because he felt it didn't go far enough for environment. I will agree to agree with Mike on that, and I'd love to work with all of you to put some things on this to limit this, as far as curbing potential environmental detriment I see. I think there's a tendency for a lot of people to take 10,000 square foot grows and want to make them into one acre. I'm going to be strongly against that. It's not in the environment's favor. So thank you for having me speak, and I want to encourage everybody to go out and vote, no matter who you vote for, I think it's important we all participate.
Thank you. All right.
Chair Bone, we have a caller in zoom if we're done.
Okay.
Caller 7713, you've been prompted to unmute, star six, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Brian Roberts. I am running for District 2 Supervisor, and I'm a little concerned. We always encourage people to act, speak up and talk to the board, be participant into politics. My concern is this: since 2019, I've written over five or six letters to the board about a certain individual in the Building and Planning Department. I had a hearing, which this individual wrote false information. You basically ruled that I owed money within 24 hours. I've sent you information about this stuff where the money wasn't owed, but yet after four weeks now of sending three letters, not one response except from Michelle. What does it take to get you to respond to someone where you made a mistake? The board ruled on something, and you clearly made a mistake, and you have no intention whatsoever of letting the public know that you made a mistake? Why do we participate in politics if it's a good old boys' network and you don't listen to anyone but yourselves? I was disgusted last board meeting the way Rex literally treated the guy that was talking about the library. You can't treat someone like that. Public comment is we comment. It's not a hearing. If this is a hearing, I would bring up a lot of information that you guys would want to come up, especially about my situation, about that appeal. Now, I was just this week and told that David Bushnell thinks I poached 20 acres of land from him. Now David Bushnell and Randy Hoydonson are business partners. That's Michelle's husband. Why didn't she announce this during our meeting? She made certain motions to deny my permit altogether based on no merit. That's not the way we run government. Government is inclusive for everyone. We have zero conflicts of interest, and if we do, we renounce it. I'm going to send information to the board right after this meeting so you can continue with your meeting, but it'll show you a connection between two people that should have been told to before the meeting. Now that's a conflict of interest, and I was ruled against, and no one's corrected anything even though I've sent information. So I don't understand what goes on here. Do I have to call out that we are a corrupt system? Is that the only way I can get Rex to respond and have a hearing again? What's going on here? We need to be, we need to correct the situation because there's too many people in different departments that are lying to you, and you're not correcting it. You can't have a staff person say someone owes money when they owe nothing. We then get it in the newspaper that I owed money. They won't correct that either because you won't come out and say, hey, we made a mistake. So correct the situation before we get the county sued. That's not how this county's supposed to be run. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back. And now, we will go to the exciting part of this meeting: pavement management. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Matson. I brought this item, I have had, and as long as I'm sure the other supervisors have had a lot of questions about the county roads and the processes to get the county roads fixed, and also the FEMA things that have happened and how long it takes. And so I went over and met with Tom and Steve, and we thought this would be a good idea to update the community with the processes and how the roads really can get fixed or can't get fixed and what the barriers are. So thank you, Director Matson, for being willing to bring this.
Good morning, Chair Bone, members of the board. Thank you Supervisor Bushnell for bringing this item forward. It's a little bit more wide-ranging than the agenda item itself, but before I jump in, I do want to note that, you know, when we go through our pavement management and we report out our deferred maintenance, that's only one portion of our bill. We have an equipment wall that we're running into for '26 and '27 to conform to CARB rules. We have all the storm damage out there that's not part of pavement management. We have ditch digging, coal replacement, potholes, brushing. All those are above and beyond pavement management. So the beginning of this report, I'm going to go through rather quick because it is what you have seen before, but it's the end of this report that becomes more important. How we now are able to run the Street Saver Program ourselves. The Street Saver Program is the program that develops our PCI report so we can get in there and plug in numbers and different assumptions, and it spits out the roads that we should be working on. And the important part about this is the county road system is one road system. It's not five districts. That was abolished in 1948 with the Collier-Burnes Act and the initial gas tax that came from the states. So at that time, it went from having five road commissioners, each board member their own road commissioner for their district, to one appointed road commissioner for the entire county, which is currently your director of public works. So I'm just going to jump right in. Tell me to slow down or ask any questions at any time, but I am going to probably go pretty quick on the first part because you've already seen it. But I think it's important to remind people where we're at, how we got here. So our current PCI is 49, which is in the poor range, which is bad news. That means it costs more to maintain our roads because it takes more to bring them back into good shape. We're with about eight counties, about 44 counties are in the 66 range, which is pretty good, but you want to be over 70. If you're over 70, you're minimizing your maintenance costs because you're using the lowest-cost techniques to keep your roads maintained in good condition. Many of those counties are self-help counties. So you can see a brand-new road is a PCI 100, a good chip seal road, subdivision road, that's still a PCI of 100, even though it may not look smooth and black. It's still structurally, it's a PCI of 100. That's the best you can do. As it starts to erode, you can see it start coming down, but these are roads that are easy to maintain with either a chip seal or a slurry seal, and they're right back to a PCI of 100. Then we start getting downward, it's starting to take more, you're going to need digouts, crack sealing, as well as a surface treatment. Then we start to get closer to the Humboldt County roads, and here we are. This is, you know, could be a typical backcountry Humboldt County road anywhere in this county. Of course, we do have our other roads are even a worse case. The PCI is an average for the entire road system, not for any specific road itself. So as you can see, we're one of the lowest in the county. We're still better than a couple of the cities, but Rio Del is now a self-help city, and it's getting a lot of roadwork done. As you can see, we're projected again with our current budget to keep going down. Actually, this is what we went down as projected over the last four years. As you can see, everybody's got a different system. Many of them have much more roads in good shape than we do. You can see there that, you know, we got a lot of roads in poor shape and a lot of them that are just completely failed. And I do need to note that this is only our paved roads. This does not include our gravel roads. This is our 900 miles of paved roads. So again, chip seal, slurry seal are the cheapest and most effective for good roads. Otherwise, you're getting into a lot of money in overlays and reconstruction. Our pavement management budget has been about $2 million a year. Last couple of years, it's been almost zero because of all the storm damage and our deficit to keep the roads open for all the storm damage projects. But again, that's over 900 miles of paved roads. And so you can see, you know, the city of Eureka, which has many, 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 many less miles, actually puts more pavement surfacing than the county does countywide. Again, if you look at it per mile, we have the least of all the cities in the county, the least we put towards every mile because we just have so many roads. So our pavement management budget is very, very small based on our overall program that we have to do. The impact of existing funding, well, we saw it go down from 55 to 49 as it was projected because that's what was projected, and now we're projecting even faster. As you get worse, it gets worse faster. And so now we're projecting to go down over the next 10 years to a PCA 25 without any extra help. So we've been through the different funding options and talked about these. So I'm going to jump into a Street Saver overview, and this is where I get into how we can select roads for getting pavement working on them without any politics in it. This is for the best of the entire road system. It's not for any district. This is our executive dashboard, which goes over a bunch of key factors. We have, you know, 3.53 square miles of total pavement throughout the county. That's about almost 100 million square feet of pavement that we have to maintain with our money. We've got 903 centerline miles of paved roads, which is basically 1,800 lane miles. And that is broken down in our analysis to over 1,800 separate sections that we analyze when we put together. And so this just gives a high-level view of our system. We have much, we can play with the input parameters. There's an allocation between the road classifications. So if we have X amount of money, we can decide to put, you know, Y amount to arterials, Y amount to collectors, and Y amount to residential. You can break that any way you want it. We are looking at, you know, basically a 40-30-30 kind of projection initially, even though right now we're spending almost all of our pavement maintenance money on our arterials because those are the main roads, and we have so little money. Those are the ones that serve the vast majority of the community. We looked at, we look at three basic treatment methods: the AC overlay, chip seal, and slurry seal. All of those have digout components that go with them. And then we project, we can project budgets. So I just wanted, I projected a couple scenarios. These are not guarantees. These are samples if we have money. I know I've done this before, and I've gotten people to come back and say, you promised to do this road. Well, this is only if we have money, and this is just a sample analysis of what we would get out of it. And so it comes up with the basic overview. It's kind of hard to see, I apologize for that. But it basically says how much we're spending on pavement, how much of that, we're assuming a certain amount would go to basic maintenance, which would not be pavement, and what the PCI would be after the money is spent for the system as the whole. And you will note that the PCI still goes down even with this money for the system as a whole. Looking at, this is the description of the system as a whole, basically, that says, basically, you're not changing much with the $5 million, but you are making significant effort on certain roads. And the Condition 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, that's basically good, fair, poor, and failed. But if you look at the very specific roads that come out of this, you will see that the PCIs with the treatments jump close to 100 on almost every single one of them that is treated. And it goes through, so for this, there's basically 12 pages of printout. I'm not showing all of them here. This is just an example of how we can look at things. With the money you've provided recently from Measure Z, we are also making those projections for those roads so we can show exactly how much money it took to make those roads go from their existing PCI to 100. So again, this is just a further look at some of the other roads, and it's from A to Z, so we only printed the first couple of roads. So there are many, many, many other roads that are shown there. If we had $10 million over five years, we got a similar kind of run. And why we do this is we look at different scenarios and try to see which is rising to the top in each scenario. That way, we can really pick the roads that are going to best affect the overall PCI improvement for the county system. And again, doing it without politics, doing it based on a county science system of trying to save our entire road system the best we can. With that, I am open up to any questions. I know we're probably not having, not answered all of your questions, but that's basically how and why we do what we do and what we could do with additional funding.
Questions? Supervisor McJohn?
So Tom, you mentioned that in the beginning slides, the whole issue of self-help counties. And so that's basically where we produce some revenue from the local community. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that then gives us the ability to leverage even more money from SP 1 and other sources. Is that also correct?
There's two different ways to look at it. A general sales tax does not. A special sales tax, the two-thirds vote, that makes you, quote-unquote, "self-help." I've mentioned self-help a little bit loosely because, you know, Fortuna, Eureka, Rio Del, they're actually general taxes. They are not self-help. But off the top, if we were a self-help county, we would get $300,000 right off the top every year from the state in addition to what we're getting and compete with a pool of about $200 million a year with the other self-help counties, which right now is a pool of grants that we can't, we don't compete for. We can't compete for, by the rules, because only if you have a self-help tax can you compete for that money.
Okay. Great. Appreciate that. Of course, all this is sort of a precursor to our efforts to put a ballot measure on in November, and we're not going to talk about that today a whole lot, but I appreciate this presentation. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Matson. So I heard you say that the arterial roads are the ones that you concentrate on right now, and that leaves a lot of roads in the rural areas with not a lot of activity going on for, you know, fixing them up, which is where a lot of the communities, you know, email, call. And given, if we were able to increase the budget, your budget, with a self-help such as a tax, what would be, how would you anticipate that the updates or upkeeps to those roads would happen following increase in budget?
So we would run different scenarios and present them. You know, we would need to determine what that allocation strategy would be at the direction of the board. You know, how much do we want to spend on the local roads versus the arterials? You know, we're looking at, you know, the arterials are like the Matole Road, the Alder Prey Road, Bryson and Thorne Road, but there's a lot of roads that connect to those roads that aren't getting a lot of love at all. And so, you know, we would want to develop through the public a allocation strategy and note that, while I run five- and 10-year runs, we would want to look at that annually because there's factors in there for CPI, for inflation, and those have changed drastically over the past few years, increased drastically over the past few years. So if I do a 10-year plan and I don't update it every single year- the past few years. So if I do a 10-year plan and I don't update it every single year, I'm promising a lot of things I may not be able to fund. So we would do a 10-year plan and look at it. And if things are good, then we keep going with the plan. But if the economy tanks, inflation doubles, then we can go back, run the new report and say, look, this is where we got to shift to. But again, it comes down to, you know, what do we want to do as a county? How do we want to spread that money out between the different types of roads so that everybody gets touched?
Thank you. Also, so that would be dependent, you know, probably on the tax measure coming in November. And if that were not to pass, status quo looks like what?
Status quo looks like we're continued to deteriorate to a PCI of 25 in the year 2032. There's no way around not investing money in the roads without them deteriorating.
Okay. And thank you for that. Last question. During one of the presentations a couple years ago, maybe a year ago, we had talked about identifying roads in Humboldt County that the county is responsible for, that maybe we don't need to be. How does that work?
So we will be, we are looking at criteria to bring to the board before we do that. I'm not going to throw out a bunch of roads out there without a background and criteria such as how many parcels does it serve? What's the average daily traffic? And then we will work out, you know, we will get direction from the board on the final criteria based on what we can recommend to you. And then we will come back with a list of roads that meet that criteria.
Okay. And then the final question is, I get a lot of communication around, you know, the hillside slipped out and it's taking three years to fix it. And we did a patch job on it. And can you update the community on why that process takes so long?
So when we're dealing with FEMA or federal highways on, our roads are broken out into two different programs for emergencies. Federal highways on the on-system roads, which are our main roads, and then FEMA on the off-system roads. And so it takes easily three years to get the approvals to even go to construction. That doesn't mean we have the money. The money may not be reimbursed from the federal government for 10 or 15 years. That's the $8 million hole I'm sitting on right now. But if you do one thing out of step, they pull the funding. And so it takes a long time to get all the approvals. You have to go through the environmental, right-of-way, design approval, permitting, before you can even get authorization to go to construction. And like I said, once you step one step out in front of that approval, they pull the funding. And it takes a long time sometimes to get the approvals from the federal government, especially on the FEMA side.
Thank you. So you know that county roads are probably the number one issue that's talked about throughout the communities, especially in the rural areas. And every, you know, study that doesn't, the reason I asked you to bring this information is a lot, some people don't understand it. And they think that we're not paying attention or not addressing those issues or trying to maintain their roads with their tax dollars. And so I really do appreciate the update. I really appreciate the Public Works maintenance people that work tirelessly. We've had a really wet winter, although not a ton of snow as of yet.
As of yet.
A lot of water that has really damaged more of the road services and a lot of potholes that have popped open. And I know that, you know, during the cold time, fixing those potholes is not something that can happen until spring. And so while I ask people to be patient, I do want people to know, you know, the reason why we can't always just jump on things and that the roads are top on the list, but not, because I don't think it's a priority for the, you know, constituents aren't thinking that the county is prioritizing the road system. And so I just really appreciate the update that you're bringing.
Yes. And I have to give kudos to the Roads Crew for everything they do. They will be out plowing this weekend. I can almost guarantee we're going to have enough snow on Saturday and Sunday. They will be out on overtime all weekend long, keeping the roads open.
Thank you.
Supervisor?
Yeah, Tom. Yeah, I appreciate it. I know we have, I get a lot of those roads are in my district and everybody else's district and the county overall. I think the guys do a great job. So, you know, as we move forward, and I, I think the one that sticks with me in all our areas, I think pretty much all our areas, we have the agreement that when somebody comes in and does construction on, you know, water line or gas lines, they need to bring the roads back up to the standard that they dug up. And I can show you three roads in my district that are completely destroyed, and it's every lateral line that was hooked to a house. Where do we follow up on that? Because our biggest problem is we just can't turn our head because some of these, you know, some of these people that are digging up have some revenue and they come in and you watch them and they do whatever it takes. They toss in some asphalt and they pound, like we do, like we do a pothole because we have so many of them. But they just knock it out. And then within weeks, you know, months, it starts to break on in the edge and then it floats out when it rains. If we're going to hold them to the standards that they're supposed to, shouldn't they, shouldn't we have a, do we have a follow-up plan or do we just bite the bullet?
No, we follow up regularly with utility companies when their trenches start to fail and we put them on notice. Most of them do fix them. Some are battles. Unfortunately, you know, I've got basically one person that's in charge of that for the entire county. But we do battle with some of them when they deny that their trench is a problem. And you look out there and it's sunk two inches. How can that not be a problem? We do have the standards. We do follow up. Usually, we get compliance in the long run, but it can take some time. And we've been, you know, we really haven't wanted to take, start taking people down a code enforcement end of things, but if we need to, we can.
We might have to because we're dealing with, we're dealing with districts and utilities that have a bigger pocketbook than us. And much like we've always stated, and we're talking about, I think everybody up here, or I would hope everybody up here hates taxes. But that's what makes, but we're operating on taxes right now that were set when asphalt was $47 a ton. And it's, you know, when it was 47 a ton and fuel was $1.06 a gallon. So for us to get anything, and that's, that's, you know, and everybody talks about, you know, cost of living. Well, we haven't been able to pass that on because we're, and then you take a look, you know, the favorite line, and I agree, because we all do the same. They pay their properties. Why paid my property taxes? Well, I think it's 63% of all property taxes goes to the schools. And then they get bonds. I think we get a cent account, a cent, cent per hundred on, per dollar on, for roads? Is that how it is?
I think it's 2.3. It totals about one and a half million out of my $15 million budget.
So I try to explain to people, I just paid. And I say, yes, you did. And I agree. And we should try to maintain. But, you know, as we, as we move forward, I think we're going to have to take advantage of, or not take advantage, is hold other utilities and districts to their obligation. Because like I said, I can, we'll go for a ride later on and I'll show you a road that's completely, it's probably a P30, you know, P35, and it is because of laterals being put in and being redone. And they're all, you know, we're getting a lot of that now. We should probably get on top of it because PG&E is upgrading a lot of gas lines. So we're going to have that and water and sewer being, you know, they're having to upgrade sewer lines. So I think that's something we need to do is utilize the monies that are out there that aren't our monies without having to charge our, our, you know, our taxpayers. So.
The problem with the trenches, we can get the utilities to fix the trenches, but if they're not done right, then they start to damage the rest of the road. So generally, we will not touch a trench and we will make those notifications to the agencies. We can step up the game.
Yeah.
Supervisor?
At the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission meeting last night, there was some discussion about a dig once ordinance. And I wondered, I know that's not on the agenda for today, but it is related to roads certainly and the impacts to them from all the utility work. So thank you for bringing up the utility work. Is that something that, I apologize, I don't know what the conversation from this board has been around a tool like that. Could you, could you fill me in?
So right now, we have a five-year policy of you can't touch a road we pave for five years unless you repave the entire road. You don't get to do a trench. The dig once, that works if we have a long-term spending plan for pavement maintenance. Unfortunately, we don't. I can't go out and tell all these agencies, here are our plans for the next five years. You need to do your undergrounding work because it's an annual guess if I'm going to have any money. And realistically, since about 2017 with the storm damage, I've really had very, very little for pavement maintenance. So it's a good concept. We do have, you know, a moratorium right now for the five years. That's under my authority as the road commissioner. But, you know, if we get a long-term funding plan for pavement maintenance, yes, a dig once ordinance would be very, very appropriate.
Yeah, it was certainly something, pardon, that the other members of the commission were enthusiastic about. And, and our guest yesterday, who was Connie Stewart. So it was, you know, it makes me think when it comes to funding for our roads and our strategies for the coming year, that that could be a selling point to people, you know, because I think there is this perception and reality around the inefficiency when there's not long-term planning and especially that dig once sort of planning that can go with it. So I feel like that could be a selling point for people.
Have you, have you driven down I Street the last three days? Since it's been repaved and there's four big ripouts that they had to do. It cracks me up.
I had.
But I think we can do a dig once and I, and RC, RC's a big, and Connie's been a big part of that on the dig once in Caltrans. We did it out here on the freeway for the underground cables and the landings. So there's no reason we couldn't have a dig once ordinance even without the funding in place. We can put that in place to operate under until we have a funding, you know, long-term funding. Because I mean, that may not happen. So that's probably something that's going to be brought forward here pretty soon.
Supervisor?
Yeah, I know that like in the Garberville area, when the service districts have had to dig, I know that we have helped, you know, say we will do X and we'll repave a larger area. And that has worked well for some of the back streets in that area. And I know that we're also, you know, trying to get some federal and state dollars for like the Garberville Streets project. And so looking for funding opportunities outside of a taxation is something that we do a lot. Can you kind of update on that?
Yeah. When we have a service district, and we did this on Central Avenue, McKinleyville, we've done it recently on West Haven Drive, where they've, they've put in a trench in the lane. The road's in bad shape. And so we add the extra money to pave the entire lane beyond what their requirement is for the trench. So the public actually gets a much bigger bang for the, for the price. In fact, some of these have just come at the cost of materials because a contractor to pave a four-foot trench versus an eight-foot, well, his equipment is set up for the eight or 10-foot. And so he has to specialize to go down to the four-foot. And so basically, he's doing the same amount of work with just laying additional materials. So we're getting very, very good prices when we do this. Just the cost of materials or very little equipment and labor, which goes a long ways to stretch our budget. So yes, we do that on a regular basis. We've done it with multiple service districts.
One last question. The community thinks that we should just throw a bunch of money at it and we could fix all the roads. And that I think we could probably expend our entire budget and the roads wouldn't be perfect, given the amount of roads that are in this district. But what is your budget for maintenance or upgrades? And also, the question that I get a lot is, how come I don't, we don't see the county maintenance crews repaving or doing big jobs? And that's a question that we, I always get. And, and can you explain that a little bit?
So we are actually limited by state law on how much work we can do with our maintenance crews. There's a formula based on our maintenance fund. We've never hit the peak of it, but we just don't have the resources. You know, on your agenda today, you approved our paver upgrade. We do, you know, the paving out with our paver, but we're not set up to do full-scale construction because we don't have that. If I did that, I'd have a lot of equipment sitting around not getting used because I'd have no materials to put in the equipment and not enough people to run them. So as we get money, we generally contract out a lot of it. But we do our, you know, we do small paving. We do all of our chip seals. We do contract out the slurry seals because that's a specialty truck. We do significant work in-house, but to spend all that money to have a fleet sitting around that has to be replaced in a couple of years because of changing air regulations is not a viable expenditure of county funds. When we get the funds like that, they're usually one-time. And that, it's perfect setup for a good contractor to come in and hammer out a project. They can do that because they've got multiple projects going on, keeping them busy all over the place. Again, whereas I would just have equipment sitting for long periods of time, not being used with money being spent to keep them up.
Thank you.
But yeah, we got you a new asphalt paver today, you know? And that thing has done miracles for us in the past few years. No, I understand. I understand. And I know we have two new rollers sitting out there.
And I've got three pieces of equipment sitting because they've expired past the carb rules and I didn't have the money to replace them. But we have to prioritize on what, what we are doing right now, especially with our equipment. I brought it up earlier. We're going to hit a wall in 26, 27 with carb rules that are going to term out a lot of our pieces of equipment.
All right. With that, I'll open it up to public comment.
Tom, I bet you wish you were in Mexico where there's no carb rules at all. So Humboldt County Taxpayers League, I think, I think Michelle Bushnell probably was at a special meeting with Fortuna down there when they were talking about their tax issues. And I've been on, starting to track that Humboldt County Taxpayers League will be playing. I've been in communication with Cliff Chapman. If you know Cliff Chapman, I think was related last night, that there was a tax measure that was to be put on with a 72% approval rate from the poll, and it came out 72% against. That's what happens when people like Cliff Chapman get together and put together things. We would love to do a deal and support a thing. I think you will find in the competition we have out here, the one thing when we did work with Trinidad, we worked with Fortuna, they got the 70%. We, we will have, have conditions and strings on things that may not be palatable. But if you want to take a sure thing, I mean, I could have given you self-help quarter cent tax March 5th. No problem. You would have had that two-thirds, would have been happy to do it. And now let's get together and come up with a reasonable proposal. You're going to be going up against everybody and their dog. And, and we will be looking at this. We unbeknownst to some of you, Cliff, and the rest of us, he's my predecessor, Executive Director with Humboldt County Taxpayers League. We do have some funds and we've been saving them. And this November, they most likely will be spent very directly, very expeditiously. And we will do the best we can to work out deals with the county or anybody else who wants to get our endorsement. And an endorsement of something like this, I think, does carry some weight. Some people will say not. So I'm looking forward to working with Tom and you guys to try and get a tax. You don't want to be greedy. You're in competition here. To become a self-help entity with something I supported, what, this would have been eight years ago, you would have been benefiting from not $10 million, but $5 million because we were only going to support, support that. But you would have been self-help and had that pot. Some people don't want to listen, don't want to accept offers, don't want to work with those of us who do participate in this process. Highly recommend that not happen this tax cycle. And hopefully, we can do something where we can all get together and bring you the support that you need to pass this two-thirds specific tax for that purpose and be a self-help entity. I'd like to see you get together and do it countywide, like it was set up last time. It was all set up to go. Everybody would have got their share. Everybody would have been self-help. And again, a quarter percent for that. I think you've got a pretty well a slam dunk done deal, but we'll see how greed does on this one.
Thank you.
Gordon Clyworthy running for First District Supervisor. It costs less to maintain good roads than to repair the roads that we have in the condition right now. We've cut Tom's budget several times in the past. Now he's asked for $50 million a year for the next 10 years to get the roads to the point where they can be maintained. Roads are one of the only fiscal holes that kind of dig themselves, aren't they? You don't put the money in for good roads. You have to put more money in later on to repair the bad roads. So, you know, we need to start digging out of that hole. And it's, it's going to cost. It's going to cost a lot. And I don't know if we're going to be able to do that.
Thank you. All right. With that, we do have All right, with that, we do have an 11 o'clock time set. Did I get that one right? So we'll take a break till 11 o'clock.
We need to do a motion to receive and file the report.
I'll make a motion that we receive and file the report from Humboldt County Roads.
Second. If we don't, does that mean it never happened? Just, just curiosity, it just goes off the screen. Nick?
Thank you, Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
Yes.
Thank you, my mouse fell, sorry. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes, and thanks again, Tom.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson. Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Eric, ready? I'm sorry. Turn to county council to read and that end.
Thank you, Chair Bone. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Jason Daniels versus County of Humboldt et al. Humboldt Superior Court Case Number CV2400192.
I will open that, this up to public comment.
One brief question, should I decide to come back? Do you have an estimated time when we would reconvene? That's my only question. If not, and I don't come back, well, I'll be thinking of you guys up here.
28 minutes. With that, we will go to a closed session immediately, please.
With regard to item G2, the board voted for one with Chair Bone voting no to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with Liebert Cassidy Whitmore for defense of the case of Jason Daniels versus County of Humboldt et al. Humboldt Superior Court Case Number CV2400192.
Great, thank you. And now we will go to J1, governing board of Humboldt County. So we need to leave this board and come back as the governing board.
Are we not doing the question? Okay. This one's going to be real.
So I now open this board back up as the governing board of the in-home support services. Public authority to receive a report from the IHSS Advisory Board chairperson.
I'm Margaret Lewis. This is Vivian Dennison and we are members of the IHSS Advisory Board. I have copies of this report. Can I? First, I'd like to give a little background on the advisory board. It's probably familiar to most of you, but maybe not all. The IHSS Advisory Board was established by County Resolution Number 2000-50 on June 6, 2000, and amended by Resolution Number 01-05 on January 9, 2001. This was in response to and in compliance with Assembly Bill 1682, effective July 1, 1999. The main duties and composition of the board are outlined in this resolution and its amendment. The advisory board is composed of IHSS recipients and their families, care providers, elder and disability advocates, and a Department of Health and Human Services staff member. The director of the IHSS Public Authority, IHSS program manager, and other staff also attend meetings. And they also report to us about things that are going on in the department. The main function of the advisory board is to make recommendations to the board of supervisors on the preferred mode of service delivery and to advise the board on matters pertaining to IHSS on an ongoing basis. Other functions are to gather and distribute information on the IHSS program to the recipient and provider community and to bring information from the community to the IHSS staff. Outreach to inform the public about the program, attend and host training for AB members and form alliances with other advocate organizations. Initially, the state provided a budget for advisory boards of $56,000 a year. This provided funding for many projects, trainings, and outreach activities. In 2011, that budget was reduced to $6,000. Naturally, this limited our scope of activities. There is a state requirement that advisory boards report annually to the board of supervisors. In the early years of the Humboldt County AB, there were only two, one or two reports made to the supervisors and many years passed with no reports being submitted. As chairman, I'm trying to rectify that and to that end, I did report in the spring of 2022. I intend to continue reports regularly so that you may be informed of our concerns and activities. After nearly two years of meeting virtually, we are now enjoying in-person hybrid meetings. Our meeting venue has changed from the County Professional Building on Fifth Street in Eureka to the Silvercrest Residential Facility. This allows more members of the public and especially IHSS recipients to attend. Many residents of Silvercrest are IHSS recipients and this venue gives them a chance to provide input regarding the program and to become more informed about our board and its functions. This year, we produced a newsletter, which is attached at the back of the report, to inform providers and recipients about the recent electronic visit verification required by the state. We've been working closely with the California In-Home Supportive Services Consumer Alliance, or CICA. This statewide organization provides networking between advisory boards in all California counties. Their executive committee meets semi-monthly and they provide statewide training and informational calls to the public. They report on legislation that affects the IHSS program and partner with organizations such as the California Association of Public Authorities, California Agency on Aging, Independent Living Centers, and California Association of Retired Americans, among others. They are currently working with Homebridge Incorporated to produce instructional videos for consumers on the IHSS program and on becoming effective managers of their care providers. Two of our board members serve on the CICA executive board. Vivian Dennison is a regional vice president and I am their secretary. This winter, we will work with members from Butte County to provide a virtual regional conference for the northern counties. This will be patterned, the southern conference, which occurred in October and included seven counties. Our primary concerns as the IHSS advisory board are care provider shortage. This is a statewide crisis and there are thousands of IHSS recipients unable to get the care they need. Advisory board recruitment, member recruitment. There's an 11-member limit imposed on the advisory boards by the state. However, many counties, including Humboldt, are seldom able to fill all the available seats and to muster a quorum for meetings. We have developed some strategies for dealing with these concerns, but they have only been moderately successful. For example, last year, we took out ads in the Time Standard electronic version, the Lost Coast outpost, also electronic, BiCoastal Media on radio station KFMI, and underwriting with K-Mud Radio. In addition to these ads, the public authority put provider recruitment posters on ETA buses. This year, we would like to offer stipends to members for attending meetings, as many other counties do. We feel that this would provide an incentive for attendance. We would like to develop a more active relationship with you, our board of supervisors and governing board, to, and to that end, we invite any or all of you to attend meetings, ask questions, and familiarize yourselves more closely with our work. We meet online and in person on the fourth Monday of each month at 2:00 PM at the Silvercrest Residential Facility, 2141, I guess it's pronounced Tide Street in Eureka. Thank you for your time. I appreciate that.
Bring it to the board, any questions? Supervisor.
Hi, thank you for your work and for this report.
You're welcome.
I saw the, you know, I took a lot of interest in the work that Homebridge is doing to produce these videos and I was wondering how, how people are going to be able to watch the videos. Are they exclusively online or will there be kind of collective playings of them so people can see them?
I think that they will be available online. There's a confidentiality issue with some of the people that are participating, so they're not going to be released to the public necessarily, but I think that if, if people are interested, they can sign up somehow to, to view them. And one of the things that CICA is concerned about, and we are too, is having a consumer voice in all of this because there's a lot of training for providers, which is good, you know, we like that. But there's not, there's not very much training for consumers to learn how to manage their employees, learn how to set a schedule, learn how to, and a lot of people have disabilities that don't allow them to do those things like easily or readily. So they require more training than, than maybe other people who don't have those disabilities. And also dealing with like problem situations when things come up and you maybe have to fire somebody or, you know, those kinds of things. And also treading the, the balance between feeling uncomfortable with a stranger in your house or feeling that they might be stealing from you or trust issues, you know, other things like that. So there, there are lots of those kinds of issues that they're going to try to address in these training videos. So I hope that they're successful. I haven't heard much progress about that lately, but we're having a meeting tomorrow, so maybe I'll bring that up and find out what their progress is. Thanks for the question.
I'd love to hear about it. So it sounds like, you know, I won't be able to watch these videos necessarily, but I'd just love to know what the status is when you sign up.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions?
Second one, thank you guys for the work you do.
Thank you.
Vivian, always nice to see you.
Thank you.
Without yelling at us. No, no, I'm just kidding.
Oh, now, now, now.
I know, it's the first thing I noticed. I missed the purple. No. Thanks, Vivian, for all you do, especially. You've been fighting this battle a long time, so.
Continue as long as I can.
I know, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Is there any public, I should ask if there's any public comment on this item?
I'll make a motion to file and receive this report. And with that, thank you guys for, I just, this information is extremely important and the work that you do is extremely important. So I want to acknowledge that. And, yeah, I was just thinking about the advertising and how to help you guys get more board members. I don't have any ideas in this moment, but I'm just like, I appreciate the, putting that out for us to think about, so.
We are, as I said, we are restricted by the state as to how we can spend our money. And one of the, one of the ways that we are allowed is to do these stipends. And I think there's some other items on the agenda for you to approve regarding that. We want to amend our bylaws to include stipends and we want to also approve two new members and we also want to approve reappointing myself as chair and Vivian as vice chair.
So thank you for that update and I was, are you going to amend that motion to include staff recommendation?
Sure, I'm going to amend that motion to include staff recommendation.
And it sounded like Mike wants to be on your board, so I'll keep that in mind.
Well, I have an application.
All right. It's been moved and seconded and amended. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you so much for coming forward and being part of the board, as well as I know you also are a provider and you've been before us many, many times. And I know Supervisor Bone meant it as a joke, but really, you've never yelled at us. You've always just been
No.
so professional and, but a strong advocate. And I know in your report, it talks about the shortage of workers, you know, and this is, it's a real crisis, frankly speaking, for people that need this assistance and can't find it. So thank you for your advocacy, your professionalism, your persistence, and your patience with all of this. So I just wanted to really double down on thanking you for that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think Vivian knew I was kidding.
Through the chair, please.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I really just want to say, you know, I get reached out to in the Southern Humboldt area from the IHHS workers down there and where services are really hard to find and care is really hard to find. Anybody like Visiting Angels or any of those organizations aren't even available down there. Hospice is a nonprofit in that Southern Humboldt area and they, the IHHS workers are mostly caring for their family, like most are. And just the appreciation that they have, some didn't even know that was available to them and how much it's helped them once they realized that they were able to, you know, get a little bit of pay for, you know, what they're, they're doing and providing for their loved ones. So I really want to thank you for your advocacy. It is so important and to the very rural and just in general areas of Humboldt County and across California, actually. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Nick?
Okay, thank you. Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
And with that.
Chair Bone, just a point of order, you do need to reconvene the board of supervisors?
Yes, I will. We will leave the IHSS and reconvene as the board of supervisors. And with that, I think we now have public health. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I asked this item to come back quite some time ago and thank you to Sophia and Connie for working with me on this. I had a lot of small businesses in my district that reached out to me with the five-feet limit that, that is currently in this ordinance. It doesn't work for them, given that they want the tobacco products behind the counter to keep them safe. And then they also have food items that are within, you know, five feet of the counter and they only have one employee available. And so I know there's some updates around that five-foot ordinance. And then also, I think for a discussion item would be the adding the nitrous oxide, whether that can work with the help of county council. And then also, there was another item on there that Supervisor Bone asked me to bring forward as well for discussion that he has gotten reached out to by many of his small retailer businesses in his district. So thank you and looking forward to the discussion.
Absolutely. Well, thank you Supervisor Bushnell and thank you, your board, for this opportunity to touch base about the tobacco retail licensing ordinance. Just to give a little bit of a overview and context of, you know, why we're here today and what we're talking about, on July 11 of 2023, your board adopted ordinance number 2718 titled Comprehensive Tobacco Retailer Licensing Ordinance. This ordinance intends to reduce youth's use of tobacco by enforcing state and local tobacco laws, such as the state's ban on flavored tobacco. We are We are currently rolling out implementation of this ordinance. Our Division of Environmental Health is processing permit applications and conducting inspections. I have here so far 24 out of the 56 retailers have applied for their application. You know, we already are having folks passing their inspections. And then our Healthy Communities and Environmental Health Team are also providing educational meetings for retailers at this time, since the application period is open through April 15th. So there's a lot of communication happening right now with, with retailers. During our process of implementation, as you mentioned Supervisor Bushnell, your board may have received inquiries about the ordinance that was passed and have questions about specific provisions. So I'd like to just provide updates on the three items that are in, in the staff report as you mentioned. And I'm just going to go if, unless it would be the pleasure of the board to do it a different order, I'm just based on the staff report, we'll just go through, through that order just so people are following along. So the first item in your staff report is around the discounts and coupons provision. Your board in the TRL, tobacco retail licensing is a lot, pretty wordy, so for our TRL ordinance, your board approved current language of the provision that prohibits all discounts and coupons for tobacco products. Discounts or coupons bring the price of commercial tobacco products down, which makes them more accessible to consumers and especially youth. Youth are shown to be two to three times more responsive to raising prices merely by eliminating discounts and coupons, which help reduce youth's use of tobacco. According to the U.S. Surgeon General, raising the price of tobacco products is the single most effective method for improving the, for improving public health outcomes of decreased smoking prevalence and initiation, reduced consumption, and increased sustained cessation. During our team's educational visits to the tobacco retailers, we learned that even prior to the passage of the TRL, that there were retailers that were already not discounting their tobacco products or accepting coupons. And after the passage of the ordinance, which was this summer, we learned that a tobacco company has already removed Humboldt County from receiving coupons to comply with the ordinance that's on the books. Our recommendation as public health would be to keep this provision in the ordinance as is, to follow evidence-based public health best practice, like I mentioned before. We came to this conclusion after extensive research, including looking at similar provisions in the state of California, interviewing staff from other California tobacco prevention program-funded tobacco control programs, and looking at peer-reviewed research studies. Statewide, there are 46 policies out of 146 that have been analyzed by our team that contain language regulating discounts and coupons, including 27 jurisdictions that completely prohibit it, as ours does. So this is a, a provision that we're seeing across the state as well. So that's just a bit of an update about why that provision is in there that we included for your board to support at that point in time, and from the public health perspective, our hope would be is, is to maintain that. I'm happy to go further on into the other items.
Do you want to ask, do you want us to ask about, because I just, I asked you earlier, and I just, I know, and you don't have the numbers, because I mean, the big thing when we do all these initiatives, I couldn't find any retailers that were contacted beforehand about what would work, what, what can you do. As Supervisor Bushnell said, a lot of these places are small mini-marts, smaller stores, and it's, you, you talk about if we raise the price. So last night I went out and checked, and a pack of cigarettes is $13.50. $13. Now, I, when I worked in my dad's grocery store, it was 29 cents a pack, two for 55, so I guess all the kids smoked back then, but, but I went and talked to some retailers, some specialty retailers, and mainly pipe tobacco and cigars. And what they do is they bring in, they don't bring in Marlboros, Pall Malls, they don't buy from big things, they buy from different brokers and, and, you know, big brokers that bring in the cigars. And sometimes they bring in a cigar that's made by, everybody's making a new cigar, it seems like, or something to that effect, and it doesn't sell. They discount those. Otherwise, they won't have the opportunity to sell, to sell them. And all of these say they don't really have a lot of kids going in and buying the specialty project. They do have kids trying to buy cigarettes at $13.50 a pack. So I'm, I'm just wondering if we, if there's a way we can decipher that out, because the ones I talked to, basically, their cigarettes are high. I mean, then I'm going to tell you, it's John's is who I, one of the ones I talked to, and the guy in Fortuna, but John's, his cigarettes are high because he's not in the program that, you know, you can send cigarettes back and stuff, so I think he just buys them separately as he goes. So I'm, is there a way we could put out a specialty? I mean, I don't know how we're going to do this anyway. I don't know if we're going to hire guys to go around all these shops and, and are we going to work with the state and do the state's bidding too when we, when we do the inspections? I'm all for it. I'm not, I'm not trying to get out of it, but these are the concerns some of the retailers I'm getting, and in all honesty, it's, it's a highly, highly, highly taxed product. I mean, but, you know, probably one of the highest next to alcohol, one of the highest, you know, the sin taxes extremely high on cigarettes. That's why I fully agree. I believe the number of 500,000 people a year dying from cigarette smoking is low. And I guarantee you, if 100 people died a year from, you know, car crashes because they didn't have, oh, wait, we do have seat belts now, so what I'm saying is, but because of the tax base and because of the, the monies of rights, we can't seem to outlaw them. So I'm just trying to figure out, as we put these things forward, it sounds really good, and then you've talked to other advocates that want to, you know, anti-smoking advocates, and I understand that, and I don't smoke, I've got asthma, I might have a scar every once in a while, although, but I'm trying to figure out if we could do any type of, you know, alleviate some of their concerns, because they don't think, think they have an issue. Cigarettes, I, I agree, don't, let's not discount the cigarettes, I agree, but some of the specialty products out there that people want to try the varieties, and sometimes they don't sell, so they discount them. Some people will buy them then, not necessarily kids. I don't know if that's a relative question, but it's something I'd like to at least, before we, yeah, let's do that, talk to the people that are going to have to implement, not enforce. Enforce, we can hire all the people we want and everything else to go out and enforce, but the people that implement them so we don't go after, you know, our tax-paying businesses.
Sure, I, I appreciate the question, and I did, was able to check with our, with our team around the question of the level of engagement that we did with retailers prior to us bringing the formal ordinance to your board. We did send out in December of 2022 a letter to all retailers. This was after we had come to your board in August of 2022, where we received feedback from your board, we presented the idea, received some feedback, started working on it, and then we sent a letter to all retailers outlining, you know, here's current state law, here, here is what, you know, we're looking to propose, please let us know if you have any feedback. And our team did receive communications from some of the retailers, and so there was an opportunity there for folks to give input. And then post-passage of the ordinance, prior to the TRL fee being passed in December with the fee schedule, all the, every single retailer was visited by our educational team as well. So I just want to give that context of just, just for the public's benefit and your board's benefit of that engagement, and I did want to just answer your question around, could we look at addressing specialty? And that's definitely something that we could go back to the drawing board and look at and see if there's a way that we could provide an, an exemption for like specialty cigars, for example, if there's something.
Excuse me, cigars or pipe tobacco and things, because those are specialty items, and I don't think it's a child-oriented, and you don't, you know, we don't have the advertising anymore, so I know that's not, I'm just, that's the one thing I've heard a lot from, from a few people, so, you know, not a lot, but I did hear from them. So, and I just, I didn't see any of the, the correspondence that we had with all the retailers, what the percentages were or anything else, or who was excited or not excited, and so. Okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I wanted to just make a comment about the, the letter that you sent out to the retailers. I don't think that, I'm sorry, but I don't think it was well read. Once that you went to and started engaging is when I started getting calls, when they understood that, oh, this is really going to impact my impulse items at the counter for those small retailers. And then also around the tobacco discount, the one thing that I've been, when these folks were calling me, a lot of those items come, the tobacco, which I think is, I mean, excuse me, the cigars, the specialty, I don't smoke, I'm sorry, the specialty items, they come discounted from the wholesaler, and they showed me like a package that, I don't know, $2.90, whatever the price was, and then the discount from the wholesaler that it came marked that way. And so I think there's concerns around products that they buy as well that are already discounted when it comes to them, and it's not really a discount that they're putting on them, and how do, how do you address that through the ordinance? So those are some, just some concerns I've heard as well around that discounted item. And also, I just want to say, you know, I know that the retailers and the small businesses are checking licenses, which is where you're catching the children for not, you know, the youth not buying that product. That's enforcement, and they, you know, want to keep those items behind their counter because of that, because they're doing the right enforcement. So I don't want to just blanketly put out there that we don't think retailers are doing their job.
Now, thank you Supervisor Bushnell for that point. If, if I may, I think that actually would be a really good segue into talking about the five-feet provision. So your board approved, you know, one provision in the TRL that would require that all tobacco products and advertisements relating to tobacco shall not be placed within five feet of candy, snacks, or non-alcoholic beverages. At this provision was created to reduce youth's exposure to tobacco products and advertising by creating more distance from common products they would purchase, and this was also added after seeing at least one other jurisdiction that we're aware of having a similar provision. As we began working on implementation of the TRL, we did learn of a recent court case that called this type of provision into question, and that we would need to remove that existing language. And so after consulting with our staff and County Council, we, we have an amendment that we'd like to bring forward at a future date with, with the board's support that would require products to be placed behind or under a counter or kept in a locked case. This would codify an existing practice, like you were mentioning Supervisor Bushnell, and this would also make it that tobacco products would not be accessible to customers without assistance of a salesperson, and then an exemption would be made for retailers that only permit persons 21 years and older to enter tobacco retail facilities. And that would address, you know, for the example that you gave Supervisor Bone of a, you know, full-on, you know, cigar and tobacco store, you know, not requiring that that, if it's for only 21 and over, to not require every single product to be under lock and key with the assumption that there would be, you know, making sure that people under 21 are not entering that facility to begin with.
I don't think I was trying to, because a lot of these are multi, they don't just sell that product, they sell sodas, they sell candy, they, they sell anything to keep their doors open, it's a, you know, they, they're not subsidized, so they have to do what they can do. So it's not just, I mean, I don't think we have one specific, a cigar store, we don't think we have any specific, I guess we do the cigarette stores, I see, I don't know if they have sodas and stuff in them, but smoke shops, is that what they're called? Okay.
Yeah.
So, but I just, yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying on that, I'm just, I'm talking about the product specific, and then the lock and key, the lock and key, I mean, we're back to, a lot of these places have one person on duty, so then somebody gets up the counter and they got to go get a lock and key open. It just, I, I know what, I know what we're trying to do and everything else, but I don't know if, you know, somewhere in there, people, if they want to, still have the right to smoke. I'm not saying, you know, we can do everything that we can to educate them, and I think we spend hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars a year trying to educate people to not smoke. I'm just, you know, it's the same reason we try to tell people to wear their seat belts or not drive fast. So I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to meet the retailer, the guy that, as we hear so often, pays our wages, we're trying to meet him in the middle so they can actually still do, you know, their business, you know, as, as reasonably as possible. I don't know if that's a...
I, I hear what you're saying Supervisor Bone, and, you know, for, for me and my role and for our team, you know, we're, we're really going to bring forward to you, you know, what we recommend as like a public, as public health best practice, and ultimately it's the determination of your board on how you, you weigh all those different considerations, like what you're raising Supervisor Bone. So I, I can appreciate what, what you're, what you're saying. And so that, you know, what we're proposing here is just an opportunity that we hope can still address the intent of reducing youth's access, and it's codifying a common practice that retailers, you know, our, our team who's been going out in the field and meeting with retailers, this is already a, a common practice that's, that's being done, and so we felt that that was a reasonable way to codify that practice, acknowledge it as a public health best practice as well. But I, but I understand that you all have, you know, your obligations to weigh all those different considerations, and so, you know, we'll take your direction as a board in terms of what exactly we would bring back for your consideration more formally.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. My comment about that is that, you know, that you've found that the five-foot is not lawful, and so you're having to change that or take that out, and so your new language is a workaround, kind of, and my wish would be that we don't require the retailers, the small retailers, and those are the ones that are reaching out to myself, I don't know about the rest of my board, to have to spend more money to try to do what they're already doing, which is checking IDs, and I understand maybe the language would be behind the counter or locked case? Or is it both?
Yeah, let me look at the language that we drafted up. Tobacco products shall be placed behind or under a counter and/or kept in a locked case. Tobacco products shall not be accessible to customers without assistance of a salesperson. Tobacco retailers that only permit persons 21 years and older to enter the tobacco retail facilities are exempt from this provision.
So the and/or, what does that mean? Does that mean behind the counter and locked, or?
My understanding is that it, that would be an either-or situation, but I don't know if County Council would want to clarify, but that, that's my understanding.
And so this language will come back in a future, at a future time for this board to discuss?
Yes, that, that would be our hope, is that if the board would be supportive of, you know, this, this language or something similar to it, that we would bring it back for a more formal introduction of an amendment to the ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely, thank you.
Supervisor.
Are there any programs that you know of that are, that provide items like financial support through grants, anything like that, financial support to, to buy like a locked case or make upgrades that would allow for these items to be stored in a different manner? I mean, I can imagine that it's a fairly minimal expense, but if people are operating on a small profit margin, I, I don't know if there are programs that offer that.
That's a really good question. I'll need to double-check with our team about any specifics, specific support around that. I do recall that when we brought this initially to your board, that our staff, you know, had offered to make connections to the Small Business Development Center if businesses needed support in adapting to the changing landscape, but let me get back to you all around if there's any other specifics around what, what you're talking about Supervisor Arroyo.
I think, I thank you for that. I think part of the issue with a lot of the retailers, a lot of the retailers have kind of gone away from, if they can, away from the cash register against a wall and kind of been centralized because of, we've always, we've all seen about the theft and the uptick and, and shoplifting, and some places they just go in and take it. But when you, when you have that area where your counter's at, and then you put up a case, you close off that whole area, your visibility changes, and I think that's some of the concern. And then if you go into mini-mart, the counter area is pretty small, so now you're going to ask them to open a case, swing doors open in a small area, because these tobacco products, it seemed to take up a lot of space. So, I mean, it used to be the, the point, let, let's clarify now, a lot of the, not a lot, the old stores used to have the big racks above the cash register, and they were only accessible by the cashier. Would those be illegal now? Because those are, you know what I'm talking about, where they could grab, you know?
But it's behind the cash register.
Well, it's kind of over the top of the cash register, actually.
But the door.
They're, they're taking advantage of the ceiling height that, for space, rather, shelf space, because they can reach it, but not a customer.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think in that scenario that would comply, but I would want to, I double-check with our County Council. I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I...
Well, I mean, can we make them comply? I mean, we're writing the ordinance, so, and to change the ordinance to make it comply. What I'm saying is, maybe
Yeah, I understand.
Maybe before we finish writing this, if maybe we could... Maybe before we finish writing this, if maybe we could take a, just a educational tour through maybe three stores to see what works and doesn't work for them, you know, three, pick three randomly, and see what would work for these smaller stores. These bigger stores are gonna adapt. The bigger stores are gonna adapt. They have room to work with. But your average Minimarts is around 1,200 to 1,400 square foot, which, you know, by the time you put your cases in, your back room and everything else, they're not very big. We've all been into them. And I'm, I'm just saying, they're, they're a pretty good chunk of our tax base. If you look, I mean, some of these larger stores are in our top 25 of taxpaying businesses, you know, these. So if we can work with them to make it, and you're right, most of them put cigarettes out of the reach of everybody because they're 1350 a pack and they're only this big. So you, they're pretty easy, it's a pretty easy item to steal. So if we could work with them to make sure we're doing something that is, denies access to the kids and, and still allows the retailer room to work without imposing on his shelf space more so than, you know, people already has for the product. Does that...
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. And that's definitely something our team can take a look at. Because I know our team has done, you know, multiple communications with retailers, have gone onsite physically and evaluated them. And so that's something we can kind of look at.
And they've done all of them, because I'm talking to a couple owners that haven't been talked to. So maybe they're...
It may have been, maybe they had another staff person onsite at the time. I'm not sure. But our staff have visited every single retailer and communicated with someone there onsite at every single retailer.
Okay. Thank you very much for doing that.
I just want to thank you and your staff for the work on this particular issue. You know, when the whipits came up a couple of months ago, there was a lot of consternation about how horrible it was, how it's killing people, and that we needed more evidence, right, to really document the impacts and everything. Well, we have a lot of evidence about tobacco and alcohol and its role in deaths in our community. And I understand the need for retail to be able to survive. And these are two items that they really do bring in a lot of income from. But I just have to say, I really, really appreciate you and your staff's work on this issue because these things do kill people. And we know that, you know, it's pretty well documented. So I know it's a difficult issue in terms of retail and the rest of it, but I just want to thank you.
And I'll echo that. I feel similarly. And, you know, whatever we can find as tools to support folks in making these changes, I think is beneficial. But ultimately, I think it's, you know, something that will serve the collective good. So thank you for your work on it.
Where are we gonna get to the nitrous part of this?
Happy to. This will be a bit of a briefer update. But just for background, as you know, on January 9th of this year, your board adopted Resolution 244 regarding the sale distribution and use of nitrous oxide. During our discussion, we discussed the possibility of adding a nitrous oxide ban to our existing TRL. But I have to be candid with you. Currently, we do have very limited staff capacity to move this forward while we're working on implementing the TRL very actively right now, needing to come back and to amend the five feet provision and managing all this while our manager is still on parental leave in the supervisor position that oversaw our tobacco-free Humboldt program is currently in recruitment. That position vacated back in, in December. So I just want to be candid about, you know, our, our team is, is doing a great job and working very hard, juggling all of these really pressing responsibilities. With that in mind though, we have had internal staff discussions about this possibility. And we really do believe it's programmatically feasible for us to include a nitrous oxide ban when it comes to like, what would it take for us from a programmatic side to implement? We, we feel that it's, it's feasible. We still need time and opportunity to consult with county council, you know, what would that language look like, and, and some analysis that would need to be done there before we brought something back to your board. So I just wanted to be candid about our limitations, but wanted to give you the update that we, we do believe programmatically it's feasible for us to proceed.
Supervisor Wilson? This is only because it's, it's come up, a few constituents mentioned to me that those products are being sold in places that don't sell tobacco, but also don't sell food products. And so I was, I'm not sure if this is the only vehicle, it is through this ordinance, or maybe this, you know, in terms, because we've been talking about amending this ordinance to address something. And then so I'm just kind of wondering if this ordinance either is the right vehicle to do that, or even if it is, can it be expanded to non-tobacco selling places? Or maybe there's two sort of venues to deal with this. No answer required now. I'm just putting it out there that, that this, that, that the target of this ordinance specifically may not be all that's needed to be done.
I know you said that it was a comment that didn't necessarily need an answer, but I'll just say that this is definitely something we've, we've talked about internally as well, that recognition that, you know, just even in the research that we've done, you know, it's like in, I think in LA County, for them, it's the issues with auto shops and the distribution of nitrous oxide, right? So I think every county, every community, it's, it is manifesting differently. And there would be a lot, need to be a lot more research to better understand the full scope of, you know, where it's being sold in our county. And I think the recognition from a staff perspective of, you know, with limited bandwidth is that, you know, with, you know, some direction from your board of like, is that the low-hanging fruit, something where we can more directly, you know, make movement on this, recognizing that there are limited resources to fully, you know, research and understand the full scope and impact of nitrous oxide in our community. So I, I definitely hear that. And I want to recognize, like, that yes, like, I think if you are hearing from community members that this, this does exist beyond the walls of tobacco retailers, definitely understand that. And this is just a way that we could, you know, we already are developing an infrastructure where we know it's being sold at some of the tobacco retailers. And so that's a way that we could start to, to move on addressing that work.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I, I don't know if I'm the county council or whoever, the, the biggest problem I see with this is a large majority of this comes in from online. People come by, I mean, buy a hundred of them for, 300 of them for $100. I mean, it's like half price on, and I, and they're buying it online. Can we restrict online retailers from shipping certain things into our county?
That is definitely an issue that we can look into and work with public health in determining whether or not that is something that we could potentially put into an ordinance banning nitrous oxide.
I'm just, because obviously we have a cigarette retailer or wholesaler that is not putting coupons into Humboldt County already. So it sounds like we could do something, and that takes that online factor out of it.
Yeah, and I, I was not present when we discussed this the first time, but I, I understand, you know, just from doing a little research about other governments that have chosen to ban this, that it's, you know, taken lots of different forms around the size of the canister to try to, you know, kind of prevent the restaurant industry from being impacted. And, you know, it looks like the whole UK has banned these, and New York State has something in, in progress. So anyway, it seemed like there were plenty of helpful resources and other agencies to look to if we decided to make this a standalone. That said, I appreciate the idea of starting with, with this existing ordinance. It's, it could add on to that, and then looking at something broader at a later date.
Well, so there is lots of language out there, and Mendocino also has a ban on these currently. The problem is how do you, how do you control that? And how do, what is the, do you have the sheriff's department get involved? And also their food grade, the ones, the little ones that are being sold. And so when we had this discussion with Supervisor Wilson and Senator McGuire, and, you know, what does that look like? Probably a legislative fix, but how does that work as well? And so I know we're still working with Senator McGuire's office on legislation coming forward. And possibly, he had mentioned attaching something to the fentanyl legislation that's coming forward. So maybe, Sophia, you could add something to that?
You know, I, I don't have any further updates from Senator McGuire's office on that. But that's definitely something we'll, I'll make a note to follow up and check in on. And I guess the, just the thing that I'll add to is the, the research that we would need to do as a team to look at something outside of the TRL, just want to recognize, you know, we've done, we already have compiled a lot of information already. And even in talking with the state and multiple programs with the state, you know, this is an issue that there's, you know, there, there's really limited information on for a variety of reasons of how inhalants are surveyed with youth, for example. It's like there's like 18 inhalants that could be surveyed. And so getting specific down to nitrous oxide, it's hard for us to get that, that impression. But the other piece, I just wanted to note that if your board, you know, were to give us direction on a broader nitrous oxide ordinance at some point, then we would, we would need to do some more deliberation. And we would need to do some thinking on our end of what would be the staff infrastructure and resources needed to research, develop, and then implement that. Since with the TRL, we developed an enforcement structure. We have an environmental health technician where one-third of their time is dedicated to this work. So majority of their time is doing other environmental health duties. And we were able to, you know, supplement some of that work with future public health funding as well to make that sustainable and to subsidize the cost of the fees for retailers as well. So I'm just sharing that of, you know, we would, we would definitely need to have more conversation around what, what that could look like for a broader nitrous oxide ban and what our capacity would be to, to research and develop that.
Supervisor Wilson?
What I hear you saying is, please be cautious on creating another unfunded mandate for your department. And I hear you. So I, I just wanted to go on record that I do support the staff's recommendations in terms of what we talked about in number one and two. And I appreciate this report. And so that's, that's where we're at, for me.
Thank you.
Okay. And I, I do appreciate all the work on this. It's just, we, we get asked questions, so we have to answer. I was wondering, I see some of your team is here. Were they here to speak, or?
Well, they, they weren't here necessarily to speak, but to provide support. And obviously, this is something they've been working very hard on.
Moral or verbal?
Well, hopefully they haven't needed to bring me back and go, what are you saying up there? But, but yeah, they're, they're definitely here to support, which was helpful when you had a question on a break.
Thanks for being here. All right. I just wanted to give them a shot.
No, no, this is, I know the camera can't, show them.
The coach always walks to...
This is, this is the dream team.
The coach always walks to the mound. I wanted the bullpen to come out and say hi, you know?
I know.
We are on this team thing.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you guys being here and all your work.
Thank you for recognizing them.
All right. With that, are we gonna, we're gonna have public comment, and then we're going to, go ahead.
Well, I did, Supervisor Wilson, was that a motion? Or, because I, if that is, I want, I wanted to add some comment to that.
It wasn't, but it could be. And we can do it now or wait for after public comment?
Chair, what would you prefer?
Looks like public comment will take about three minutes. So we'll wait for public comment. Waiting. Please come up.
Ken Swasky, nice to be welcome. I, I strongly support moving forward at this stage. I also think maybe we should be patterning the, the use of this in a different manner, maybe a little bit larger than what we do with weed somehow, hopefully from the state level, where if they're gonna have a legitimate use for it, you know, then they are licensed. And then only licensed transporters can move that between suppliers and the people, just like we do with other products here that are of great concern. And then also, you, you would have a, a system where anybody who had more than a certain quantity of possession of a certain more quantity of things would then be, be in some kind of criminal prosecution. In other words, equivalent of doing with black market dealers. So those are just something maybe of the overall, strongly support Supervisor Wilson's thing to be more inclusive of all the different uses that may be used for that and move down that path at another time. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, let me get back to the board for...
Chair, we have a caller in Zoom.
Oh, please.
Okay. Thank you, caller 6715. You've been prompted to unmute. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. No comment at this time.
Thank you.
Never mind. All right. Did we get the motion out, or were you, you were waiting? Okay.
I, I move staff recommendations.
I'll second. Yeah, I'd like a discussion point about that. So, through the chair?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You started.
So the staff recommendations for the five feet is that, and can I clarify that, that your staff or, we're still going around to retailers, like updating them? And have you guys been, I just want to clarify that we're not talking to retailers right now about that five feet? Because that's something that I was also reached out about.
Yeah, my understanding is that we're, we're not emphasizing that part of the ordinance. It technically is a part of the ordinance right now, but it's not something that we've been emphasizing for inspections. I'll double check with our team around that. But our staff is currently at a conference at those, the inspections. But from internal conversations, we've determined because that's still needed to, to get addressed, that we weren't going to emphasize that in, in inspections.
Okay. And then also, we're hopeful that in the future, possibly Ria Dall or Fortuna would tag on with this ordinance? Is that correct?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So if another, if one of the cities wanted to adopt the same ordinance, we're working on, more broadly with environmental health, developing MOUs with all the cities for all environmental health services. But this could be something that could get added on where our staff person who does the enforcement and inspections, that service could be provided to other cities that adopt the same county TRL.
So thank you for that. And my question for asking that is I have been reached out by the two cities of my district. And their concerns is that they do want to support, but they don't want to cause the, their small retailers to have, you know, a panic like they did about this five feet. And so that was an issue that I heard from Ria Dall and Fortuna. And so additionally, with the, with the motion on the five feet, and now you're gonna ask for the, you know, locked case, and that is, my hope would be that we're not causing those small retailers to have to incur more expense. And like Supervisor Arroyo said, I don't think there's, you know, she had asked the question about whether there would be help for that, which would be great, financial help if there was, to provide a locked case. I'm not aware that there is though. And so when you come back to this board with recommendations, my hope is that we are really investigating what that expense would be. And we're cautious of that, given in the economic downturn that we're having in our county right now. And I know cigarettes are, you know, uh, but my, I, the protection for the, the businesses and the small businesses is really in my district. And the panic that I received from them around this is, and they're doing their job. They're checking IDs. So I just really hope that we bring something back that won't cause retailers to have, to spend more money.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. So from what I'm hearing from, from this is when we bring back a formal amendment to the TRL with that proposed language, we would also bring back information to you all. I would like to bring back information about, you know, what retailers currently do not utilize that practice or would not currently comply with that provision. So we can, we can do what we can to get that information to your board and then provide any information we have around resources for businesses to address the costs and what would be potential costs to retailers. That's what I'm hearing. If that's the pleasure of your board, we can, we can definitely work to compile that information.
And then, are we still gonna look at the specialty products part? That, like I said, there's only a few retailers that's in fact, and it's a liquor store in Fortuna, Arcade Liquors has a small Umidore, I believe, John's, I'm trying to think who else has. I'm just, is there a way to work with, with those people? Because I, I don't know if there's a, you know, I, I, again, I don't know if you can or not, but hopefully we're gonna do that. I mean, I just, I know we sent out a letter, but we're, we're gonna be charging them how much a year for their license?
I would need to double check. I think altogether with the initial application fee and then the licensing... I think altogether with the initial application fee and then the licensing fee, it's a few hundred dollars, but I would need to double-check.
Like 430, is that right?
Yeah, but it's something like that, but then the annual renewal is pretty minimal at that point. So there's like, the initial application, full inspection costs that, that initial application fee covers, and then the renewal is much less.
And then we also have their state license and that they?
Yeah, I wouldn't know what the, the state licensing costs are.
Anyway, I'm just following a little bit on what Supervisor Wilson said.
It's $2.65 for, for the state license.
Okay.
See, that's why they're here.
Yeah, there you go. Worth every penny, there you go. Good job, nice job, team. But the other thing is, as we worry about doing unfunded mandates for ourselves, we need to show that same concern for our taxpaying retailers and businesses of the unfunded mandates that we seem to pass so easily, and, and be aware that, you know, some of them are on the brink of not being able to pay anything, and then we lose, then we lose even more. So as we move forward, I'd like to look into that, or at least talk to some of those people to see if any of that will come into play to, to help any of the retailers. We've got 56 of them, is what you said, and it seems that we should be able to get, reach out and be able to talk to the principals at that, and then some of those are chain stores, I imagine. I mean, you know, so.
And just to make sure Supervisor Bone, that I'm capturing, what you're recommending is looking at a potential amendment for specialty products around that discount and coupon provision?
Not a coupon, I don't, coupons, I'm just saying, letting somebody discount, I'm not looking for discount, coupon, I'm looking for somebody when they buy something, just like anything else, is when they buy something and it doesn't sell, you'll see, you'll see, you'll see all these energy drinks, and all of a sudden, they're 69 cents a can, they worked you 99 three weeks before, but they don't pick up because there's 35 energy drinks out there, so they discount them. And so I'm just like, they do the same thing with, with, with some of the specialty tobacco products, that's the only thing I'm looking at.
Okay.
Supervisor Wilson?
Go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair, and as the motion maker, I do want to, again, I'm kind of going back to the staff's time, and, and what I heard from the director was that they have been considering these things, and that there was both practicality of implementation of these types of changes. I mean, I'm just going to say, if I have to lean one way or the other, I'm going to lean towards the protection of our youth from these products. That being said, I know you guys will do, you heard concerns from some of the board members here about the particulars of these, of these, of the, of the ordinance and these situations, but I want to make sure that the overarching sentiment, at least that I'm putting forward is, and I believe the majority of this board is, that this is an important ordinance, and that, that it's, the purpose is to protect our youth from these products, and so I want to make sure that that is the overriding mission here. So, thank you.
I concur with him 100%. All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
I'm seeing a ever-pressing consent to adjourn. Thank you.